Okay, I think we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome to the school board study session, March 28th, 2022. I'd like to welcome everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. And our first item up is to talk about our purpose and agenda for the evening. And for that, we'll turn to Dr. Stallow.
Thank you very much. Good evening, board members and community members and those of you listening online. The purpose of study sessions is to share information and ideas and to be sure that board members have all the information that they need for efficient board decisions at the table. This evening, in terms of our agenda, we are going to spend some time taking a look at our FY fiscal year 23 budget and go through some of that information, which we'll also talk about enrollment and some of that information. We're also going to have an update from our district priority work on our strategic two direction, primarily from our human resource folks. Lots of policy information. And then I believe you'll be talking about this, Chair Nelson, but I believe BWP, search firm representatives will be joining the meeting later for some information on a timeline and update. Board members, just so you're aware, at that point, I'll just step out of the room and then come back in for the rest of the meeting as that agenda comes forward.
Okay, thank you. I would like to make one note on the agenda for this evening. You will see that early in the agenda, we originally had the update on the timeline and process being followed by BWP. Our consultant is currently in the air flying and has said that he will let me know as soon as he has landed. At that point, if there's a convenient time in the agenda, even if we might be in the middle of a discussion, if we get to a natural pause, I'm going to ask if you would entertain having him join us at that point for probably a very brief update. But the community has not had a chance to see on video any of our consultants and hear from them, the process we're following and what's been done so far and what we're looking forward to doing. So if I have your agreement to that, I will, Martha and I will both be watching for him to land in the airplane and we will look for a pause at that point. So I'd like to review, as we do at every study session, the board working document that we use to guide us. Tonight, we will be dealing with our role in district policy, reviewing policies in the 400s, 500s, 600s, 700s, 800s, and 900s. We're making great progress. In terms of operational oversight, we will be talking about personnel, individual focused services, and support. And we will also be talking about the 2022-23 preliminary budget discussion. And that was slated for February into March, so we'll be talking about that. Also tonight, under superintendent relations, again, we will be taking the appropriate steps to employ the next PL SAS superintendent. So we will have an update on where we're at on that timeline. And I believe that is it. So because we are waiting for our consultant, we will go on to the next step, which is oversight of operations for our 2022-23 updates.
Great, for the budget and enrollment update. And I think, Marcus, are you going to help us advance slides? I know that our study sessions, we used to sit more in a square in the other side of the room. And with COVID, that has changed a bit. And we, although our COVID concerns are less at this point, we also know that the sound, the audio doesn't pick up very well when we sit in that square. So we've decided to maintain this structure for our study sessions, but we do want this to be a conversation. So we've even tried to arrange the tables a little bit, so it's more discussiony. We're going to be coming in and out. Several of us will be sharing information as we go through the budget with that. So I'm going to let Julie kick it off, and then we'll just be coming in and out a little bit. And Marcus, thanks for advancing the slides.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Stallow, tonight, we will talk a little bit about the budget and the budget process and those items that are included in the current year budget, the assumptions that we're making, enrollment assumptions that the district is making, and some of the results for this year, or I'm sorry, for next year and the following year. And you can see, you'll be able to see some of those results. Marcus, if you want on, everything that we do for the budget is based on our mission and vision, and so those items are always listed here as part of our budget presentation. These are some of the areas that we have been discussing internally as well with the board, as far as our budget process and what it takes to put this budget together. We do know we have a slowing enrollment growth. We've been growing, we were growing rapidly. It is much slower at this point, but we continue to grow. We know that state funding has not kept up with inflation, and we've talked about that several times as well. We do have some workforce challenges and unfilled positions that has affected our budget this year as well as last year, but it also affects our ability to teach and help those students. So we'll talk a little bit about that. We do have some one-time COVID relief dollars that we have been tracking and that have helped us in the budget process and will continue for one more year. And after that, that'll be a drop off of those funds. We know that we have unfunded mandates or underfunded mandates, specifically our EL program and our special ed programs. We did get a little bit more money in a cross subsidy, but when I say a little bit more money, I'm really meaning a little bit more money. It's not a lot, in what the legislature helped with that for last year. So we do have additional needs with our students. And we have aging technology that we need to address, especially in this time where we don't always know what is going to happen with COVID and the pandemic and will students be in school or out of school. We have increasing curriculum costs, particularly because many of our costs need to be transitioned to online curriculum. And then we know inflation is higher than normal, and we're seeing that not only in our supplies, materials, the supply chains are difficult sometimes to get items, and so those are also part of the context of this budget process. If you continue on to the next page.
I can go ahead and grab that. And the other context that I just wanted to share, and I know we've talked about this numerous times, but I just want to remind the board and our, in our community that, again, you've heard us say many times that we educate students for about 2,000 less per student than the average seven-county metro area. And I think that's significant as we continue to and start talking about the FY 23 budget as part of our context as well. The process that we use for this, similar every year, we make sure that any of our conversations about budget needs or efficiencies are aligned to our strategic plan. We make sure, and especially this year, very cognizant of where we are financially and making sure that we talk about the impact of any decisions or any asks that we have for increases. So we had a chance, all of our leaders had the opportunity to share efficiencies or needs. We went through multiple meetings analyzing those needs and really taking a look at them and discussing those. You can see some of the themes that emerged. We had many student academic needs around staffing, both EL and classroom staffing as Jim and his team have been working with our principals, curriculum, and technology. In terms of student needs, we know that there are more social and emotional needs of our students. So our principals came forward with requests for additional deans in all of our buildings. As we look at district safety, and I think we could also say this would be part of social and emotional needs too, are looking at supervision and adults who are with our students in varying areas of the school to help make sure that they are in the classroom where we want them to be learning. We also had a request for crisis management coordinator. We've been doing a lot of work around crisis management, especially our standard reunification method work. And we've been doing that just as part of additional work that all of us do as staff members. And then there were a few positions that also came forward, requests that came forward in different departments. And as we took a look at all of those things, we really tried to, and you're going to see this later in the presentation, that anything we're bringing forward is really about prioritizing that very first bullet, the student academic needs. We wish that we could be requesting, and you could say yes to many of those things up there. And as you're going to hear from Julie and you're going to see throughout this presentation, we just simply aren't in a place to do that.
So we'll start, as we do many times, with enrollment. Enrollment drives our revenue. And so when we look at our current year enrollment and our next year, that's an increase of about 70 students for next year. Currently, with our kindergarten enrollment, we trend and see where we're at this year compared to last year and the previous two years. But our resident student enrollment for kindergarten is lagging behind by about 25 students. And it's about 50 students fewer than it was two years ago. And so we are lagging behind, but we are gaining more open enrollment students. We're about 11 students ahead of where we were last year and 16 from two years ago. So it's not a wash, obviously, but I know that our principals are working hard to see where those students are and what their plans are for next year, so we can make some plans for staffing for our kindergarten classrooms. So I did want to update you on that information as well. And you can see, as we move forward in the next few years, we eventually get to a point in three years where we're actually pretty stagnant. And when we're not growing, that's revenue that the district isn't receiving for those students, and we're just really dependent on whatever the state gives us. And you know, as well as I do, that 2% on the basic formula is 2% on about 60% of our revenue. So it's not 2% on all of our revenue. And so I just want to make sure people understand that. As we talk about our revenue updates, the legislature usually does a two-year biennium. Last year, they increased, or should, last year at this time, they gave us a 2.45 for the current year and a 2% for next year. We have about 70 additional students, so that's about $700,000. We do have a special ed increase of about $400,000. And we have some COVID funds offsetting that, about 1.06, that we have not allocated or we, we'll show you how we're planning to allocate those funds for this next year. Some of the things that we still don't know is, are we going to get any additional funding from the legislature this year? We do have over a $9 billion surplus. And so will the state allocate any more funding to public education? And will we receive any additional COVID funding from the state? And so those are two things that we just don't know about at this point. And I'm not sure when we will. You know, it could be May, or it could, we could not get anything. So at this point, we're not planning on anything, and so that's not reflected in our budget.
Just want to share an update that we received, Marcus, I think on Thursday, maybe of last week. And to Julie's point, we don't know what's going to happen with the state or the federal government in terms of any additional funding. But Marcus, would you mind just sharing the information that you got on Thursday of last week?
Yeah, we, the FCC announced that there is a third round of the ECF funding, which is emergency connectivity funding. We have applied for in round one and received dollars for student devices. We have an application in for round two, and then they just last week announced that there will be a round three, which will be submitting an application to see what dollars we can potentially get from that funding. So this is an example of announcement that was made last week. They extended it to a round three, and so we'll be applying, so.
No guarantees, but I think that's how quickly we all of a sudden learn of some possibilities and just don't know when or if those opportunities will come our way.
What was received in round one that we got? How much was?
You'll see it later on in the, in the slides.
Yeah.
Do we buy for it the same amount, or did they determine the amount?
So it was based on student devices. So we submitted what we had purchased the previous year, went through a vetting process, and then we rewarded those dollars.
As we move through these assumptions, these were our original expenditure assumptions that we would, we have in the budget, a four-year average salary and benefit increase. We know that our transportation costs are increasing 6%. Increase in fuel and utility costs of 5%. We originally had talked about some online curriculum costs of about $200,000. We know, as I said before, about our supplies and materials and the increase in those costs. Our property liability, workers' comp, cyber insurance, those are all going up significantly. I haven't even received all of our quotes yet. I'm still waiting on some of that information. I'm anticipating 6%. I'm hoping that we stay within that amount. Technology, as we know, we have insufficient technology for our distance learning. If we were to have to move to that again, and we're making an assumption that we're going to fill all our open positions. So as we build the expenditure budget, that's the assumption that we're making. Whether we can or not is another thing, but we are budgeting for those positions, because many times, those positions are special ed positions, para positions that we need and are in student IEPs. And so we need those positions in order to fulfill those requirements for those services. This is, it's hard to read, so I'm sorry about that. So hopefully you have it on your screen. This is what it looks like next year, just based on those assumptions that I've talked about, the revenue and expenditures. This does not include curriculum, nor does it include any additional technology at this point. So it's a 9.3% fund balance. I want the board to understand that we anticipate there's $1.6 million of unexpended funds this year, over and above what we anticipated. That is in this budget. So it is showing under next year budget deficit. That should be over $3.2 million, and it's only shown as a 1.691, simply because I'm showing that savings of 1.6 in that line item. So we haven't been able to fill all of the positions in the district this year, and that is a savings to the general fund of $1.6 million. That's what we're anticipating for the end of this year. So that savings is showing in this budget. And that's based on all the assumptions we talked about with the revenue increase of 2%, 70 students, and all of those expenditures going up, transportation and wages and benefits, all of that. If we go to the next slide, this is the next year, the second ensuing year of 22, 20, 23, 24 budget. And you can see that the district's fund balance goes from a 9.3 to down to a 4.4%. The fund, district's fund balance policy is 8 to 12%, so we're definitely down below that fund balance policy for that estimated 23, 24 budget. And again, this, there's a lot of variables out there that we just don't know about yet. But at this point, the district is, has expenditures over revenues of $5.3 million. And that is a tough, and I, as your district's finance, that's a tough thing for me to stay and that we're overspending that much money. And it's a significant amount of money that the district needs to either, there's a, raise additional funds or make reductions in expenditures.
And this isn't a surprise, board members. We saw this last year, which is why your decision was made to go out for a technology levy, is exactly what Julie said. We knew that we were either going to have to cut more than we had the last two years or gain additional revenue. And when revenue isn't coming with the increase of students that we had seen for a number of years, that was the option you put forth.
So that's kind of where we're at with the second year, looking out. If we continue talking through some of these, you want to switch to the next slide? So our 23, 24 COVID expenditures, or 22, 23 for next year, we utilized about 600, we utilized $683,000 this year of COVID funds for, to offset some of our budget cuts. And so we're anticipating that again. We're going to use those $1.6 million to offset some of those, again, of about $740,000 in guidance counselors. And then the potential of utilizing Laker Online of $330,000. We also have about $200,000 of curriculum. So you can see that's more than what we have available, but we could definitely use any combination of those things to utilize those COVID dollars.
So I think the next thing that we want to talk about is we've spent a lot of time as a leadership team, really talking about Laker Online and looking at what our options are for students and families that have wanted to, this year, continue with an online learning experience or into the future. So I'm going to let Dr. Edwards take the lead on just talking a little bit about Laker Online and ultimately where we've landed with a recommendation for next year.
So we skipped over a slide and talking about setting the stage two back about this current year. We do have Laker Online happening K-12 this current year, if you recall. But our recommendation moving forward is that we would make that a 6-12 endeavor. And that is based upon the data that you see in front of you, where currently, we have 73 students enrolled, and we've had a high, a strong success rate throughout the year of those students being committed and staying committed to online learning in the format. And we did conduct a survey in early, mid, and throughout February till we had 100% participation. It took us a while to make sure that was the case. But based upon that, we have 46 students that are currently enrolled in Laker Online that intend, students and parents that intend for their learning experience for next year to be an online experience. We certainly, that is a delivery model that's a change for members of our community to a certain extent. And this recommendation that we are bringing forward is to meet that need, that prior to COVID, we did not offer, we are not an online provider, with the exception of students picking up individual classes as they needed at the high school level through various online programming. But we have had students and families who have experienced this now over the course of the last couple of years and found it to be an effective delivery model for their student to receive education. And we currently have a waiting list for students as well. And so we would anticipate, if we were to move forward with this recommendation, that we would also reach out to those families as well and build out a program for those students. But as we move into the next slide, we have a staffing proposal to meet the need of those 46 students who have told us, along with their parents, that they intend to continue to have an online experience for their child. And we believe that in order, as a program, as a district, to provide that experience, it would be in our best interest to do so. And we are bringing forward this FTE to meet that need. We currently have two FTE for our students. This additional 2.4 FTE is based upon a six-period day that students would maintain as if they were in-person learning. And that is the staffing needed to accommodate that. The special education FTE is based upon knowing what some of those students who receive special services need and additional support, as noted there. We, with this proposal, we believe we could accommodate up to 60 students. If we exceeded 60 students, and again, we have a waiting list, so we could, that's where we would draw from, as well as, we currently have students that are resident students within our district that are enrolled in online learning outside of our district in a variety of programs. And we certainly would inform them that if we move forward, that Laker Online would be available as an option.
So the couple of the things, if you recall, last summer, or last year, we weren't planning on offering Laker Online. We just, with some of the rules with MDE, we just weren't planning on that. Well, then, as the summer came, there were some changes with how we could get approved, and we started hearing from more families in interest. So at that time, we decided to move forward. At the same time, Southwest Metro Intermediate District also moved forward with building an online program to support, we're a member of that intermediate district. So they built that to support member districts. We made the decision that we wanted to, if we were able to provide this opportunity for those families that chose it. So that's why we moved forward with it this year. What we've done is we have taken a look at what, so if the students stay in Laker Online, we get full tuition from them, from the state. If, so we get, we keep those kids, we keep the money. If they go to Southwest Metro, there's a portion that we would pay Southwest Metro for offering that. And as we looked at those two options, financially, it's very, very even. And we're really confident that if we offer Laker Online, those 46 students will stay in our online program. Many of them, we believe, would also go to Southwest Metro. But as Dan indicated, there are other online schools or schools in other districts that we could lose some of them to as well.
Are we at a place where we could pause, or do you want to finish up with Laker Online? Is there more on that?
There isn't on that. I think the Laker Online moves into the staffing. I don't know how tight you are with time, if you want to pause, or if you want us to finish this, the presentation, or what you, if you, what you'd like to do.
He is available and on a tight timeline, but I hate to interrupt the flow at the same time. It's a brief update. Let's see, how many pages do we have left? It looks like we could finish the presentation and then hold the discussion until after the update. Would that work?
That sounds great. We'll move through it quickly.
I apologize for the interruption.
I think that'd be great. So Dan just shared with you the staffing, the staffing model related to online learning. And I'm going to ask Jim and Sam to talk a little bit about other staffing recommendations that we have as well.
Can you start with EL needs? So as you can see with the Mars number reporting there, we had an increase of over 60 students this year in EL, and our staffing remains the same. Projections for next year shows a slight increase as well. And now, there's a little discrepancy in this number here, because actually, the number that the teachers are seeing on a day-to-day basis here, they're reporting to me at 307 students. And our Mars number, the latest submission that came out, has crept that number up from 269 to 283 students now. So we're getting closer to that 307 target. Ricky, a member of our, Ricky, actually, our Mars coordinator and I are working to go through the numbers very carefully and make sure that all students are accounted for.
And then on the classroom side of things, as we kind of mothball Laker Online in the elementary and move those kids in, and at the same time, Julie talked about going up 70 students. As we kind of shift all that around, our focus has been to make sure that our class sizes are not changing and hopefully going down in most areas as we've leveled off with the number of students that are, growth-wise, are coming into the district. So we just felt that there was a need in some areas to add some additional, whatever FTE we can, in order to alleviate that and, again, move into the classroom some of those FTEs. And so you see a small increase there for classroom FTEs as well.
So that total FTE between the EL staffing and the classroom staffing is about a 2.5. And we know, based on what you just heard from Julie, where we are currently deficit spending, so we struggled to come forward with an ask to you for additional staffing. So the recommendation that is going to follow right now, that Dan will speak to, talks a little bit about how to reallocate and realign some of our staffing to meet that additional 2.5.
Before we move on.
Thank you. So sorry, I got a slide ahead of me. Thanks.
We also have a 1.0 FTE that we're adding at men caps, but that funding will be offset by the additional students that we are receiving from Farmington School District for that. So those two things offset each other. And then if you look at, there's a movement of $25,000 into the general fund from community education of $25,000. Laker Online, that's $330,000 as one time. We would use some one-time COVID funds for that. This is Mary, the answer to your question, that we received about almost $400,000 in one-time emergency connectivity. one-time emergency connectivity funds. We would utilize that, we have not utilized, we've received the money, but we have not utilized that, those funds yet. They were really received to offset expenses that we've already spent, but if we were to reserve those funds and use them to help us in the future with a lease, we could lease the computers, and maybe Marcus, you can speak to this a little bit better than I can, about what the need will be, but we could actually lease it for a little bit less than those funds are, and then have about $70,000 to carry over into the next year to help us offset that lease again in year two. You want to?
Sure. And what we're looking at is a consolidation of student devices, going from two devices down to one device, and upgrading aged equipment. So we were, again, looking at a lease. We're looking at different leasing options as we speak, just to prepare for that potential project, and again, we would be leveraging those one-time funds through the emergency connectivity fund.
And then we also have about $250,000 of curriculum. We talked about that at the beginning, that we thought it would be 200,000, it's 250, and the $50,000 will be offset by reducing building supply budgets for that purpose of the additional curriculum.
Clarify, so we've already got the 398 here?
It's been awarded.
It's been awarded, and it's in the budget already? It's included?
No. No.
And we're going for another round of approximately, based upon the number of devices or number of students?
Number of devices. We're looking.
So when you're talking about decreasing the number of devices, were you talking about Chromebooks versus iPads?
Yes.
And then if we decrease the number of devices, is that then decrease the amount that we can be awarded?
I want to make sure I'm tracking your question correctly, okay? We are looking at consolidating, currently we have Chromebooks and iPads. We are looking at using these one-time funds to purchase, or lease additional iPads, okay? The amount, the total, is still, we're working through that, but the idea is to consolidate, replace the Chromebooks, and have enough devices to also, through that order to replace, we know we have legacy devices within the iPads as well, so get rid of fifth or sixth-gen iPads, try to update those as well, consolidate down to one device, and use these funds for that purpose. So I'm not sure if I answered your question, but...
And maybe I can help before you, but what we're hoping to do is that we would get this third round, and that would actually pay for the iPads, so that we would not have a lease, is what we're hoping for.
And I get that. What I'm wondering is the count, you said the funding was based upon the total count of devices, so if we're getting rid of the Chromebooks, especially the ones, I assume they're on carts and things like that, and going with iPads, does that decrease the number of devices and therefore decrease the amount we get because they're totally, that's, that's, okay, that's what I was trying to clarify?
Yep.
It'll just be whatever we spend is what they would potentially reimburse us for.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Okay. As you've seen in previous slides, we have some classroom and EL English learner FTE needs, and as Dr. Stallow pointed out, these 2.5 FTE, given the fund situation, not only next year, but the following year, we felt as a team that it would be best to make some adjustments in usage of our existing staffing to meet those needs, and as a result, are bringing forward the recommendation that we would take our current four FTE that are committed to our technology integrationist teachers on special assignment, that's what TOSSA stands for, and reallocate those people and reassign those people to positions for which they are licensed throughout the district, and that would allow us to meet 2.5 of the classroom FTE, as well as return a peer coaching position. We have 10 buildings, we currently have nine peer coaches. Previous time, there were 10, and so we would take that remaining FTE and commit it to a peer coach that would have an instructional technology focus, and then that remaining portion of that would be utilized as well for additional instructional technology support in conjunction with the technology department specifically, to provide a restructure that supports the students as well as staff across the district. And this is something that we have obviously looked at long and hard, and we want to, in need to, support classroom needs across the district and feel as though this is the best use at this time of our limited resources.
And if you move to the next slide, here's what next year would look like. The areas that were adjusted are the COVID relief funds increased by the amount of the technology and the lease for the expenditure, and you can see we'd have about $70,000 left to be utilized the next year to help offset the lease costs of $323,000. And then there's additional expenditures in our basic skills, which are towards the bottom under number seven, so we would have additional expenses there for EL teacher, and then the remainder is in the general fund up in the unassigned operating. So it would reduce our fund balance down to 9.1% in year one, which is a big change from year one of, without these changes, but I do believe the next year does affect us. If you go to the next page, Marcus, this would look like a 3 point, now I can't even read it.
3.5?
3.5. 3.5 in year two. And that's a $6.1 million deficit spend in year two.
That is a lot. Can I ask the board for direction? Are you comfortable if we don't start the discussion until we have the opportunity for the timeline update? Staff who are presenting, are you comfortable with that? I apologize for the awkwardness of that. Okay. At this point, then, we'll take a brief pause, and we will be admitting two of our consultants from BWP. And the goal tonight, I'll wait till they get on. Good evening. Can you hear us okay?
Yes, hi.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for your patience. You're giving us a break right in the middle of an important budget discussion, so we're looking forward to some levity here.
It's nice to see that everyone's still awake.
We are. This is an engaging discussion, it's a good one. So I would like everybody in the community who may be watching or in the room to, maybe I should let the two of you introduce yourself, but these are, Steve Griesbach is our head consultant from BWP and Associates, who has been our liaison with the search firm, and they will be providing us tonight an update on the process and the timeline, just so our community can hear where we're at. So we won't be discussing specifics or characteristics or anything like that, but you will all have a chance as a board and as a community to hear what they've been doing, where we're at, and what we have to look forward to. So Steve and Phil, I can turn it over to you if you'd like to do that first, and if we have any questions, we will follow up.
Okay. Thank you so very much, Michael. I'll start off, my name is Steve Griesbach, and I'm one of the partners at BWP and Associates, and we are pleased to be selected by your board to help you with the search for the next superintendent for Prior Lake Savage area schools. We think you've got a lot to offer candidates, and we're very excited about this opportunity. My own background includes lots of time in schools, as a high school teacher, middle school assistant principal, an elementary school principal in two districts, and then assistant superintendent, and then in the state district, was promoted to superintendent. All of these were the Chicagoland area, and since my retirement in 2013, I've done over 40 searches for BWP and Associates, and have done a number of them with my colleague and friend, Dr. Phil Earhart, who can introduce himself.
Thank you, Steve. My name is Phil Earhart, and I'm also a partner. I've been an educator at both the elementary level, high school level, in three different states, primarily in the suburbs of Indianapolis, Cincinnati, and then most recently in Chicago. I was interim superintendent also in Evanston for one year. Also, I currently serve as the executive director for the Midwest Suburban Superintendent's Association, and Minnesota is one of those states, so it really helps us on having all the networking that we can do through that organization and with our many, many associates that we have throughout the United States with that. I too join Steve in saying we're very excited about the process, and we'll be happy to give you an update.
Thank you.
You may feel as though Prior Lake is getting a late start on this search, and that's not unusual. This is towards the tail end of the search season, but that doesn't mean our great candidates out there or that our process is still going to result in some terrific options for you as a board to consider. Everything that we're doing in Prior Lakes is exactly what we do in every other search, from the online survey to the meeting with focus groups, to our work with you as board members and with your staff. The only difference is, instead of usually having six to eight weeks of applicant, time for applicants, it's down to about four, but in the age of electronic applications and social media and the ability to access ads, it's very doable. It's one of the reasons we also thought that we wanted to add, rather than, we usually have three consultants, we have four consultants on this one. So Phil and I are joined by another one of our partners, Dr. Ann Dolan, who's been with the firm probably 15 years and done 100 searches easily herself, and then a local person, Jen Barretts, who was the Rosemont Apple Valley superintendent until she retired about three years ago. And so we think we've got a great reach and a great team to go out and recruiting, and that's it, and then we add on our other partners and associates in the firm, and we think we've got a lot of great reach for that. We've also had the board, a lot of great board support, and so with the board's agreement, we've placed ads with the American Association for School Administrators. There's one up with Martha Wall's help, with the Minnesota Association of School Administrators. We've also reached out to the National Alliance for Black School Educators and the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents. And there's a publication that most, many superintendents read across computer and other educational leaders called EdWeek, and we've got an ad in there as well. The job is also with Martha's help, posted with the Minnesota Association of School Administrators. And so between all of these, not only are we hoping to give you a national, recruit nationally, not only through the ads, but through our other associates and partners, but also hopefully reach out to diverse candidate pools, so that we can bring you a strong and diverse pool. So we're working on that very hard. In addition, the position is posted on our own website, which lots of people looking for jobs visit on a regular basis, or are sending email from us indicating there's an opening, and we pick up applicants that way as well. So that's kind of that recruiting piece that we launched really almost two weeks ago, and it's already bearing a lot of fruit. I checked this morning before, and we already have had 13 applicants for the position. And while I love the most, that's a good number in two weeks, we're looking for quality, not quantity, so don't get caught up in the numbers, because in reality, all you really need is one superstar, and we're looking for that person, though we hope that it's a difficult process as you try to tease out who that superstar will be. So that's the recruiting part of it that's already launched and ready to go. And Phil, have you want to talk a little bit about how we help to boards to figure out what's the right person for you to hire, and how we get that information?
Sure, we'd like to do that. So what we've tried to do is develop a leadership profile, and that's based on three different factors. The first factor is to interview individually the board of directors, which we have completed that process. Secondly, is to launch the survey, which is already online, and that's going well. And then the third one is focus groups. We have identified with the assistance of the staff 19 different focus groups. As of today, we have finished 13, and over the next two days, we'll complete the remaining six focus groups with that. When we do these three different data sources, we really start to see themes that start to emerge from that, and we'll start to identify those and then develop that leadership profile. In brief, what the leadership profile does is to establish a set of qualities, characteristics, and abilities for the ideal superintendent to lead the Prior Lake Savage area schools. Once we've done that, we will present that to the board. The BWP team that Steve mentioned before, the four of us, will use that as our framework and our filter to identify candidates for us to interview in the screening process. We also will have the leadership profile for the board to use and to craft interview questions that you will then be able to use as you start to interview the candidates, and we will provide you with a rubric and able to, us to do so as well. The leadership profile really is the key component of this, and we will also have that publicized on the district website as well, so that all the participants in those three different methodologies that we use can see that their input was sought and also valued with that leadership profile. Does the board have any questions about the purpose of the leadership profile?
Not at this point.
Thanks, thanks, Phil. Just to give you a number on that, we already have probably more than 1,400 surveys completed throughout your area, and it's open to all of your staff members, all of your residents, and your high school students as well. So that's already a strong response, and we like to see a large number of those, because what happens is that the larger the number, the more likely it is that the findings we're going to present to you will be more, will be kind of reflective of the majority of your community. If you only had 10, it can be skewed pretty easily by a few people. So we're thinking that, you know, given these numbers, and the survey is open until April 5th, that everyone will want to weigh in on this, and that the numbers will be over 2,000 by that time, though. And so with that, we'd also like to thank your communications person, Kristi Musman, for helping us to reach out to those communities, as well as Sam also helping us to reach out to your, some diverse populations within your school community. So that's going really well. We want to talk to you a little bit about the timeline. We know that we're not the only search going on in Minnesota right now, or across the country. There are probably at least four that I know of that are going on in Minnesota, and there may be more if I dig in a little deeper. We have what's called a rolling search, which means that when we start seeing good candidates, someone on our team contacts them and talks to them about the job. We like to think of this as, as kind of hooking them in to why they might want to work at Prior Lake Savage school area schools, getting them interested, engaging that, and this is done even before we know whether they'll be a good fit or not. So we just want to make sure that they have the idea that someone's spoken to them, and it's just not an application sitting in a database somewhere, that it's actually real people who have taken a look at it and read it, and that encourages people to stay involved with the process. And so we're moving further ahead with this. We intend to present to you the board and your community on April 11th at your board meeting, the results of the surveys and the focus groups and interviews, and share that information with you, and then review with you the leadership profile, and we're going to look to see that the board says, yeah, that's what the data says, and that'll be really helpful to us. Once we have that, we're going to begin interviewing in earnest, using that data profile, to see who's a great fit for your community. who's a great fit for your community. And it's our hope to bring back a slate of candidates to the board on April 28th, and we're hoping that will be four to seven candidates that are really well qualified for your job and match the leadership profile quite closely. Our goal in that is we will only bring you people we think really are a good match for your school community. But we hope that in presenting those candidates and when the board begins interviewing those candidates, that it's a difficult decision to narrow it down, and then when you get down to choosing a finalist, which will be, take place about two weeks after we present those candidates to you, that's an even more difficult conversation among board members. And so if we've done that work, then we will have presented you with a successful slate, and then we'll work with you through until you actually hired an individual to take over to be your next superintendent of schools.
Thank you.
So I think that's given you an idea of kind of the timeline involved and our process and the way in which we work, and the thoroughness in which we're approaching this through our standard methodology.
And Steve, once the superintendent is hired, another service that we are very proud that we offer through BWP is mentoring for the new superintendent to make sure it's a very smooth transition, which is critically important. So we'll work with both the new superintendent and the board to ensure that occurs in a seamless fashion.
Thank you. Go ahead. Are you entertaining questions or do you have more? I don't want to cut you off.
We are, we've told you what we need to tell you right now, but you may have some questions that arose through our presentation.
Okay. I have one question I will hold until the end. Any other questions about our processor timeline this evening? Mary.
You said that it looks like the majority of the focus groups have been completed. Do we have a, do we have any type of list of those focus groups and what's still left?
Mary, it's in your update that I emailed you.
Board update that we got.
Oh, okay.
I apologize.
I didn't see the full list, so I...
Yeah, it's in the update that came out, but I can show you mine too if you would like.
Okay. Then never mind. If it was in an email somewhere, then I will find it.
Well, there are still a lot of opportunities for people to participate. There are parent community open forums, one on Tuesday night and one on Wednesday morning, and there's, if teachers and staff want to participate and they missed an earlier time today, there's an opportunity for them to catch up with us on Tuesday afternoon from 3:45 to 4:20. So we may not reach everybody, but the survey is always out there for anybody and everybody to take. And so we know that people have busy lives, and the survey and our questions cover very, exactly the same ground. So we're just trying to make sure that we verify our facts in more than one way.
Thank you. And I will just say that the newspaper did run a story this weekend about the opportunities for the community as a whole to participate. There will be a reminder going out as we get closer to the time for the survey to close. Some people have asked about that as well, and anyone listening, focus groups are still open, and if they get too large, there will be breakout rooms. Questions on this side over here?
You know, you mentioned that there have been about 1,400 respondents thus far on the survey. Is there, is there a target that you guys are hoping to see based on the size of the district or the community? How do you, is there a magic number where you feel like you have solid representation?
Phil, I don't know. We think that right now you've got solid representation from your community.
That's what I was going to say, exactly.
Anything above that and beyond that is, you know, is extra and good. So that tells us a couple things. One is the word got out, so your communications department did a great job doing that. The second thing is that people are best in your community, and they really care about what's going on, and that's all another good thing. And so we think you're already in really, really a great place.
Great, thank you. Enrique.
Yeah, um, yeah, thank you, Steve and Phil, for the presentation. One thing you mentioned earlier on was that, just kind of given the time of year, we're kind of shortened the recruitment timeframe, meaning the length of time that candidates have to apply. Were there any other changes in terms of like the timeframe for stakeholder engagement or anything of that nature where that was also truncated, or it was just the timeframe for applicants?
No, there hasn't been. The other pieces are standard for us. The only thing that was extended was the period of time for people to respond to the survey. Your members of your executive committee, as well as your communications person, felt like a little bit more time might be helpful for people in your community, so that's really great. And then as you begin working as a board, the standard work is to interview a group of, the slate of candidates one week, and you get to the finalists the next week, and you keep that process moving. So if, you know, you don't, you don't lose someone who's a great candidate for you, then we really like. So that's all working out really well. And we've actually been, the shorter timeline works really great for us because our recruitment has been really robust. There isn't a day that hasn't gone by in the last two weeks that I haven't talked to somebody.
Right.
Or Phil, or Jane, or Anne haven't spoken to someone about the job. And so we're really getting some nice traction with people who are interested in your school community.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Now I have another...
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Enrique.
That's all right. Thank you for that. I'm thinking of the focus groups and the survey responses particularly. Are you able to share kind of a distribution of survey respondents so far in terms of representation? Just thinking that I remember from the previous...
No worries.
Nope, not yet, okay.
That'll be coming when we hit the final report. We use a third party to administer the survey, so we're out of it, and nobody can say that we're trying to skew the results of it in any way, shape, or form, and we can kind of have a hands-off until the end. She reports out to us the number of respondents, and that's where we are right now. And the survey is available both in English and Spanish. And that, through Sam Oak, he's working with his staff to reach out to other languages within your community and actually going to administer the survey to those people, to those people in those groups so that they can participate too as well. And that's a, that's a better strategy than translating it to another language because it just provides a more equitable way of reaching out and one that they're more comfortable with.
Sure. Sure, I appreciate that.
Good to see you.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, and part of my reason for the question was if we see that we're not necessarily getting the traction within a certain group versus another, maybe there would be an opportunity to do some additional outreach. One group is, we have a number of residents that don't have students in the district, so just making sure that we do whatever we can to also bring them into this conversation. Thank you.
You, Enrique. Any other comments or questions on this side about the processor timeline? Nobody else? Okay.
The board needs you to resend me that because when I try to open it, it doesn't show up for some reason.
The PDF doesn't open? Okay.
No, it shows up as gibberish, but that's okay. I just assume that, you know, we got, we got the board, we got principals, all that kind of stuff, we got the mayors and the city council, their own group, and then the rest of everyone else.
Yep, there was a couple of solid days, thanks to Kristi's help, where we worked nonstop sorting out who those groups were, who we needed to reach, and how to communicate with them. And again, there are still, there's still community surveys open, so if people are listening and want to participate, please go to our website under the school board and look under superintendent search for a link to sign up for that or to take that survey. I do want to add one question if nobody else had one. Did you have one, Stacy?
No, go ahead.
And that is, you know, you see, I've seen discussion on social media and heard concerns that maybe what we really should be doing is putting our energy into getting an interim superintendent and delaying going full-on search to get a good match right now. Can you speak to that based on your experience and, you know, do we have anything to lose or not by going full-on right now?
I think that you have everything to gain from going full-on right now. There are still a number of outstanding candidates out there who can, who can do a great job in your community, and we're seeing, we're going to wait to see how some of those people that have applied really match up with what we learn in your leadership profile. We think that it is actually counterproductive right now to talk about an interim superintendent because, you know, we feel like you've got everything to gain from going whole hog on this search right now and putting your best efforts forward, and anything that distracts people from it also gets filtered back to candidates who say, well, they're not really, you know, they're not really that interested in this. They're just going to move it into an interim. We think that you, you know, there's a couple reasons. Both Phil and I have been interim superintendents multiple times, and we can tell you we've done good work, but the things that get done when you hire a permanent superintendent, you begin to build those community relationships, you begin to talk to your staff, and they see that this isn't going to go away in a year. And you begin to talk to your community and build those relationships, then in the long run, you don't have a year of kind of doing okay but not really moving forward. So we'd like to think that you will be best served if we can help you to find a great leader. The interim is a fallback position.
It's your last resort.
Yeah, if it doesn't work out, then you're back to that other choice. But we don't think you're there, we don't think you should go there right now. We think that if anything, we've doubled down on our work to get you a great candidate. We think the board should double down in its efforts to really focus on making certain that as we move forward and you begin talking to candidates, that they're convinced that you really want to have someone for next year, that you can look at and build a relationship over a long period of time.
Good, thank you. I appreciate that feedback. So for anybody listening, we are going full force to get the, a couple of candidates that we stay up all night trying to debate who would be the best match, and we do know from our agreement with you that if we were to get to a point where for some reason we weren't satisfied or didn't feel like we had our winner, that you're still with us and we're ahead of the game because we've already done our focus groups, we've already done our survey.
And as a firm, we're in there until it's done.
Right.
And that, and if that, and for, as a last resort, if that leads over to next year, you've already agreed to what we're, to what we've charged, we're charging you, there's no additional cost to that other than any expenses involved, and then no additional consultative fees. So, you know, that also is, so let's all work together and let's make sure that we can pull in and recruit a great group of candidates and that you have a great, have a great experience interviewing them and have a real difficult time because the quality is so good, choosing who your next superintendent will be.
Fabulous, thank you. I would just like to say it's been very good to work with you. I can tell the hours that you're putting in and the seriousness in which you take it, and I'd also like to thank our administrative staff who've partnered with you to help us get the information out and get to all of our stakeholders, so.
I did focus groups all morning, and I was very impressed with the quality of people who participated on both the administrative, teaching, and staff levels. And I know, I've heard of, just briefly from Jane and from Phil, who've done some focus groups, that things are going well there as well. So we've got some focus groups tomorrow and some open forum, and then we also have a little bit more on Wednesday, and we'll, we'll be starting, we're already organizing our notes and looking for those themes and the frequency of those themes across the various groups. So thank you very much.
Thank you both.
For your time, I appreciate you calling in. Good luck with the rest of your travels.
Hey, we'll, I think we're coming back, and some of us will see you on April 11th.
Absolutely.
See you soon.
Thank you very much, and I'll be in person. So thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Jonathan, would you get Terry first?
I know.
Goodbye, thank you again.
You're welcome.
We'll bring Dr. Stallow back in, and again, I would like to thank the staff and the board for making time to allow them to come in based on their schedule. I know it was hard to interrupt the budget discussion, I'm looking forward to getting To get us back on track, does anyone want to reiterate anything on the budget presentation before we open for discussion? I think we're good. Okay. I'm going to do my best tonight to facilitate discussion, to try and keep everybody getting multiple chances to speak, to ask your questions, and so I'll ask that if you've got several that you might ask one or two, and then we'll continue to go around the table and come back around. Would somebody like to open up with questions or comments this evening?
Sure.
Jonathan.
There you go. Early in the discussion, there was the slide about the COVID expenditures, and one of the things listed is $740,000, that's guidance counselors. And I am, just connect dots for me. My understanding throughout this process is COVID expenditures, for the most part, have not been, been things that were new expenditures, or we were supposed to be spending those dollars on things not previously budgeted for most of those, those were the restrictions. We didn't add $740,000 worth of counselors, did we? So somebody connect the dots there for me on that.
So when we first started getting some CARES funding, they started calling in and some different things. There are very short timelines for those monies to be spent, and they had to be spent in a certain way. As time went on, we also received funding, and the money that we spent in the current year for the guidance counselors was to main, could be used to maintain programming. And so that's what we did, and one of the allocations that we could use is, was to allocate some of our general fund dollars and use those expenditures that way, and that's what we did. The guidance counselors are not new, I just want to make sure, and it's not like we will cut them if we lose the funding. And the point is that they fit, they fit the criteria for the funding for COVID, and in order for us to not have to make additional $700,000 of cuts for the current year, we allocated those resources to that revenue code in essence.
Okay.
So, and that's not the intent, it's just to be able to spend that money without incurring additional expenditures.
Understood, thank you, that's helpful. And with regard to Laker Online, the numbers to me, this is juxtaposed with the email we had this afternoon about targeted class sizes and so on and the ratios, and I'm just trying to connect those dots of 46 to 60 with the number 2.5, and we're usually saying at the middle, middle school and high school level, we're 30 to 32. I realize it's difference between a classroom and, but help me, help me connect the dots with those, with those numbers and that staffing. A point two, assigning a .25 counselor to that group, it'd seem, it'd be great if all of our counselors had 200 students to work with. A 1.0 would have 200, it seems like we have a much bigger ratio than that these days. So kudo, good, good for the online folks, they're going to have a little more support. But it just doesn't seem in line with what we're doing elsewhere.
I'll, I'll address the classroom FTE first in that these students represent 6th through 12th grade, and we run our programs separately, 6th through 8th and 9th through 12th. And in order to get that full funding that we spoke about earlier, they need to be fully enrolled, taking six classes in a term-based, that's the terminology used, a term-based program, as opposed to an independent study where they take classes as they need. So they're actually following a school day schedule with synchronous and asynchronous learning, so they actually have a class on a regular schedule. And so the 1.0 is a 6-8 and a 9-12, and a teacher at 1.0 can offer five classes. Students need six, so the additional .2 at each level arrives us at the 2.4.
Okay.
So, and again, that's why we have built in with the assumption that we could get up to 60 students, which would return to that class size that you're pointing out.
Okay.
With regard to the students... With regard to the student support need there, additionally, once again, these students, maintaining students enrolled and completing the courses and monitoring and supporting those students through that process, that's the, the, the reason for the additional FTE request related to supporting those students and ensuring that they are meeting, because we don't get the funding if they do not finish that term and earn those credits.
Okay. I have a couple of other things, but I'll let.
All right, we can call around.
Go in and come back.
And Ricky, do you want to jump in here? Or come back to you?
Yeah, come back to me.
Okay. People around this way. Amy, do you want anything you want to start with?
Um, I have a lot of thoughts. But I want to reiterate that. I want to reiterate that we're facing cuts in technology today because we didn't pass the tech levy last fall. We want to keep our tech integrationists. They're important roles in our district. But, you know, at the end of the day, it's coming down to priorities and the impact of the actual students in the classrooms and making the biggest impacts there. I want to talk a little bit about the fact that last spring, we projected a fund balance of about, I think, eight and a half percent. And by October, we were sitting at 12. So I'm just looking at our numbers now and I realize a lot can change, but we're sitting on a.
That we didn't have any, the legislature wasn't done with their work, so we were projecting zero.
Yep.
And we also didn't know with COVID, what the impact of that was. And so that is the reason.
Absolutely.
Based on assumptions. And the same thing is happening here. It's based on the assumptions that we're bringing forward. So those can change very quickly, as we heard, just with the technology.
And we'll, we'll learn more as we continue because I don't think we make a final decision till June on the budget, right? Yeah, but, um, you know, when I'm just kind of trying to forecast a little bit, when you look at the surplus that the state has and the priority that they're putting on education, I'd like to think that we'll get a piece of that. And hopefully we'll know by then and we'll have a better idea and can make some, some bigger decisions. And then in terms of our district and what all the districts in Minnesota are facing, it's just a huge problem filling positions, particularly for support staff. It's, I view that as a long-term problem. Everything you read tells you it's going to be a long-term problem, not just in our industry, but in many. And so part of me wonders, do we need to get ahead of that? Granted, if I look out two years, I get a little scared to do that. But I, I'd like to think that maybe there's a solution in reducing our average class sizes and hiring more licensed, certified teachers to reduce class sizes would help us with that. I know that's a huge increase in commitment and it looks scary looking a couple of years out. But I think that that would help all of our kids and make a big impact on their learning. And I know we have needs in special ed, but if we can reduce class size, that's going to impact that, those students as well. That's my two cents. And I, I'm having trouble looking beyond the end of '23 because I just think there are so many unknowns out there and we have needs right now that we need to take care of. That's, that's kind of a conversation I think I'd like us to have as we move forward.
I just had a couple of questions. Sam, on the EL students, you talked about 307, I think you said, or three or two or something like that?
307 is what the teachers are saying they're saying right now.
So can you just talk about the reporting that's coming out here? Is that people that have filled out the paperwork? Has there been issues with COVID? I mean, I know we've had, you know, people haven't had to fill out paperwork as much. So is that part of the issue as far as?
Well, so the Mars, the Mars submission is, is what we pull off in terms of our numbers and what's reported of EL students serve and all that at school and everything like that. So those numbers come out and then they're reported to the state. And then they get, we get back, you know, the numbers of students that are served, students that are generating funding and students that are eligible for EL are not being served in our schools here. I ran into this, this situation before in my previous district. And a lot of times there's a discrepancy in, in, in reporting somewhere where the, the, where we're reporting EL services, but not the correct school and all that. And that could create an error in the numbers, which then doesn't get counted in the Mars report. A lot of times what we're seeing is students who were identified EL in another district. But when they enroll in our district, they mark as they're only speaking English only. So then we don't get, we don't pick that up too. So then we get a warning report saying that those students should be counted as EL. And that's when we then know and can adjust our, our reporting based on that. So at the moment right now, we're about 27 students, different from what we're, we're serving.
But in that case, the students are receiving services then?
The students are receiving services.
So they come in receiving, no, we know that they are, need services, but they're just calculated?
We're not, we're not, we're not counting them correctly somewhere in our system, yes.
Oh, okay. Because I would assume we're missing out on funding then, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We are missing out on funding. They're not being reported. They're not being reported correctly to our office. So we don't know that they're being served. And so we're not getting the funding for them.
Okay, so we're working to correct that, I'm assuming, right, is what we're saying? Okay. Then as far as the unfilled positions, Jim, this is a little bit to you. I, I know I talked about this in FLYR, is we have a lot of special ed. So these are, you know, written in each student's IEP that it's required that they have this. But we're not able to fulfill that? Or are we, how are we modifying that? I would assume at some point you can't continue to keep going on like that forever. Or how, I mean, what's, how is this working out?
I think Deb's back there if she wants to.
I think she left, but.
She left?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I would assume they're, where they're having to look at those IEPs and see if they need to make any changes. Oftentimes they'll make a change that'll say an adult will have this many minutes with them as opposed to a specifying a para. And that might end up having to be then the teacher providing that within the classroom because there's not a para available. So I couldn't give you specifics on that, exactly what they're doing as far as meeting the IP minutes or not. But I assume we're, my guess is we're running short in some areas just because of the lack of staff.
Well, and I think that goes a little bit to what Amy was suggesting then, you know, we're missing 20 pairs a day. Is that an equivalent to five teachers? And would that suffice to, that we would be able to meet the needs, you know, of, of those IEPs, of those students, based on the fact that we're able to change the model, basically is what I think. So I know it's thinking outside the box, but I also think, I would agree with what Amy's saying, that a lot of this isn't going to go away as, you know, the job market continues. We can't, I mean, I think you saw what's happening in Minneapolis and they're fighting for their support staff to have basic wage. And that, you know, those jobs aren't high paying, like living off a para salary. So I think we, we know that is difficult. So I do think that is something to maybe explore as well. And then I had one other question. When you talked about the budget, Julie, and going out, the percentages that we look at, the, the percentage like 9. whatever, 5, and then it drops down to depending on the scenario, 3% or 4%. And I'm catching you off guard without asking this in advance. I should have done that. But I know we've put together while I've been on the board, a fund balance policy to keep 8% to 12%. And that basically, and this was a while ago, so the numbers could be a little off. 8% to 12% is how much of expenses, like weekly, six, six weeks of expenses?
Eight would be four.
Four, no. Okay. So I knew it's probably gone up. So at what point, at what percentage would we need to start to borrow money to make payroll? And I know I'm putting you on the spot, but I'm assuming like at 3%.
Oh, it's, it's more than that.
Okay. So when we start to get to the 3%, 4%, 5% in that?
There'll be months that we would have to borrow, especially depending on, it's a cash flow that I'd have to look at.
Yeah, it becomes a cash flow issue.
Right.
So there'll be a cost to doing that.
There'd be a cost to borrowing money to make payroll, yes.
Okay. All right, that's all the questions I have right now.
I had a couple of questions too, and, and I know, Julie, I'm going to put you on the spot. But one of the, we keep hearing about the cross subsidy. Do we have an actual number?
Hundred thousand dollars.
A month, a year?
Year.
It's a hundred thousand dollars.
That's the revenue we're receiving more of what they didn't.
I think she's asking what ours is.
Oh, it's 6.8 million dollars.
Okay. Specialized.
Yeah.
Sorry. I jumped in.
With the surplus going on, and I'm not sure what all the school districts are, but we've been fighting for this for a long time. And I'm just, I'm thinking that if we could put all of our eggs in that basket, that would help quite a bit to really push, to make sure that's funded and to give them a formula to keep it funded going forward. And I'm not sure if that's, you know, if that's something that, that, that would be, would really help us overall. And I know it's not the only thing we need, but I mean, I just wish that with that number, that we could do that as our legislative priority.
So with, when, when we say we have a cross subsidy of 6.8 million dollars, that means of the required special ed costs, the district is utilizing 6.8 million dollars of general fund dollars to, to help with offset those special education costs. Last year, the governor said that he would help us. We would get some additional cross subsidy funding. That ended up being about a hundred thousand dollars, which is where I said. That was about a hundred thousand dollars, which they thought was a big deal. But when you talk about a 6.8 million dollar cross subsidy and a hundred thousand dollars is helping us to offset that, that's certainly not enough money. I mean, it's something and it's helpful and I'm not going to say we don't want the money. I'll never say that. But it's not enough to help. And I've said this before, you know, that's a big chunk of money to come out of our general fund to support the required costs of special education. And so, and I know we're not the only district in the state and we're certainly one of 330 that have this issue across the state of Minnesota.
Okay, well, thanks for qualifying that number because it's something that I think we need to continue to remind and put on everything as much as possible. Then as far as the positions, so we're, we're shifting from the, from the tech support roles of some of these that we moved, I assume, right before the pandemic or right after the pandemic started in order to give us that extra support. So these teachers were not, that's what I'm trying to get.
No, these positions have been in place since I believe, I'm going to need some help from some of you that were here then. But when the iPads, when we first started rolling out student iPads, is that when those positions?
I'd say they're seven.
Yeah.
They're close to seven years ago.
They've been part of the Department of Teaching, Larry, for a choice of time.
Okay.
They weren't added pre.
They weren't, they weren't, they weren't just for it. Because I was trying to, trying to put that together about how we had certified teachers in that space. And I know that the, the online learning and the forced environment that we were in was, put extra stress on that. And I thought maybe we moved some more into that role, but maybe not. So Marcus, what does that do to your staff and your ability?
It's an increased burden in, in supporting all stakeholders. So with that potential reduction, that support lies on my tech specialists, my technology secretary. Basically, everybody in my department has to absorb that. And it's, you know, when we had conversations regarding this, I brought those concerns forward. We are looking to, a couple of things we're looking to do to soften the blow is to hire back two additional field techs who, those are positions that we had not had filled for over a year, actually pre-pandemic. So we'd like to reinstate our staffing to pre-pandemic levels by hiring two additional field technicians who could do that level one, level two tech support within the classrooms. So if a piece of AV equipment goes down, projector, smart board, sound system, those, having those additional field techs would help quite a bit. I also have a retirement within my department that's coming up. So I'm looking at transitioning a position to more of a help desk position to, again, help with the level one and level two. And then part of the presentation was to have that point five instructional technology support as well. So it's, it will have an impact on, on the support and the services we provide. But we'll do our very best with the people that we have on my team and within the department.
Now, we went out for the tech levy. I believe there's only two additional people in there. What we estimated we were going to hire as part of the tech levy?
Yeah, additional two. That is correct, yes.
Now, is this, obviously you weren't anticipating losing this number of people on top of that?
The people actually, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mary, but they actually are in teaching and learning.
They're not tech.
So, so it's, it's not, and, I mean, it's, it's shared positions, but, but, but I think the questions you're asking, Marcus, are really about the technology support and the instructional technology piece that they provide right now are in Dan's department in teaching and learning.
But I assume these people were helping.
For sure.
Existing educators.
For sure.
And that's where I was getting at it. So by moving that and not having the tech levy, then basically you're short even more. And we want to hire those two addition, are those two additional people that you just mentioned, are they in the current FTE open?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, they are. Yep, so, yeah, they're in the budget and those are just positions we were not able to fill currently, but we're going to try again.
And if I may, I add a couple of factors in, in making, bringing forward this very difficult decision. We certainly, the value that those positions, those people in that position brought to us during the pandemic, invaluable. And the capacity that our teachers have developed throughout the last two years, I don't think we could have predicted the capacity that we are capable of developing over the past two years across our system. And that factored in to this decision. And similarly, this peer coach with an instructional technology focus, the intention is, the hope is that one of those folks would be a candidate for that position and interested in taking on that role and responsibility and be the lead with relation to that and bring their skills to that position so that they can support other peer coaches who would support at each site level, our ongoing work in instructional, instructional technology and embedding that into the day-to-day work. But the skill set of our teachers does not go unnoticed in this particular proposal that we're bringing forward that's been developed throughout the last two years.
Yeah, I, I hear you. And I can't imagine that people didn't come out of this whole experience being quite a bit more knowledgeable in and of themselves and the individual instructors, et cetera. I'm just worried as we grow and as we increase the use of technology, how this is going to have that long-term impact and what our options are going forward. Because it, you know, especially with more, you know, online learning with the greater use of online curriculum, even in the classrooms here, integration between different pieces and parts of the technology, it's going to be a challenge. I have no doubt that the skill set of the educators that we have are going to rise to that challenge. But it's just, it's also about how much we're willing to put on their shoulders on top of class sizes, increased learning, et cetera. So I do appreciate the work that's been done. I'm anticipating that we're at subsistence level and we're now going to drop below it in this area as well as other areas. So I am concerned about the net impact to that. I do want to ask, of the open positions that we have seen with the movement of these TOSSAs back into that, what is our net balance on open positions now? Do we, do we have that? And I know I didn't ask that in advance, but.
How many do we have currently?
If we, and is the number that you're going to, is it reflective of what we just talked about with these open positions?
No. This is, this is kind of a net zero here. It's unrelated to what we've been reporting.
Okay.
Of those open positions.
Thank you. Julie, do you have some comments? And we can come back around then. I just want to assure everybody.
Are you done? Sorry. I just had a couple of things. I echo what Amy spoke on.
I echo what Amy spoke on where a year ago, we were sitting looking at it eight and a half, or eight and a half, and we ended up near twelve. And I know there's a lot of variables for that. If I look at the twenty-three, twenty-four budget with recommendations, that would have zero increases from the state, correct? So there's, zeros plugged in there, right?
Two percent.
Oh, you did two.
Two percent is plugged in there because we know that's two percent for next year.
I'm talking the year after, sorry, at the three point five that year.
Two percent is in that year as well.
Put that all in there, okay.
Those are the bases, but if you're expecting additional revenue because of the.
Surplus.
Surplus, that is not in there.
Zero is on there?
Zero is in there for that. So you have a two percent increase in the base revenue because we know that is happening.
Okay, that was the two point four five and then the two. Okay. I wanted to clarify that. And then the second thing I did wanna ask, I really, I am understanding the mandated positions that are unfilled. I get that. I would love to hear further from Deb, how we're actually executing that. If we continue to have unfilled positions, I don't think that's gonna go away. So I'd like to figure out a way just to at least look at that and not wait until these positions don't get filled. And that's where, I understand that we're not really cutting integration technology specialists. We're realigning, but as we realign, and I know you've spent many hours going through the wants of everybody, I believe we should look closer at what that unfilled position dollars look like and where we could allocate some of that within the parameters of our governing, like rules, right? We don't all understand the mandated positions, but what do those look like? You know, I agree with Mary, in a perfect world, that six point seven special ed cross subsidy would disappear, but I am not a big fan of hope and I just not, I'm not. So I guess I would like to figure out where in our budget, we, I know we're deficit spending, but we, we need to put teachers and adults in these buildings and how can we do that? So that's just.
So that, that is, we've had discussions about these open positions. So it's either we leave them open and hopefully fill them and utilize the budget that way, or do you cut those positions and reallocate those funds somewhere else and hire? Like we've been talking, do you take five paras and say, we're cutting five para positions, we're gonna hire one teacher and they fulfill those duties or somehow doing, of doing that? And so that is a way that you can do that work. It's just a matter of looking at those IEPs and making sure that we're fulfilling those requirements of those IEPs. And that I can't speak to. And so definitely need some input.
And as we, just to provide some context, as we talk about these open positions, just so that everyone understands, if we have seventy of them, and it's not a static thing, it changes constantly as we have people come and go, but let's say we have seventy of them. My best guess, sitting right here, is that fifty of them are probably community ed, special ed, or food service, right? So, um, it doesn't leave a lot of positions, a few secretariales that may be open as people are coming and going, some custodial positions that are really general ed or general, you know, general fund positions. So, um, it seems like a lot and in this, in the sped world, that would be one place where you could do that in isolation, right, for those services. But the rest of them, um, you know, if they're, if they're community ed or child nutrition, or special ed, they're for, for those areas. And if you need that many, uh, food service folks to run the high school the way you, we built the high school to do, you need those positions or you reduce your services, right? So just so we understand that it isn't seventy where you could just begin to cannibalize them and start hiring other positions because there's rules around that.
And I wanna make sure that we understand that food service is a separate fund from the general fund and so is community ed.
Right.
Special ed is in the general fund, so, or custodial. But those food service workers, we're not talking about those when we're talking about the savings of the one point six, nor are we talking about community education staff. We're only talking about those staff that affect the general fund.
All right, we'll kind of come back around, um, but did you have a question related to that, Amy? Were you asking about a number?
Well, I just wanna clarify because I need help, I guess. Twenty-one, twenty-two, two point four or five percent increase on the general fund, that's in here. Twenty-two, twenty-three, an additional two percent is in here, got that. What I think you were getting at is twenty-three, twenty-four, you assumed another additional two percent above the four point four five.
Yes, and.
That's in here.
Another forty students.
And, okay, thank you.
So I anticipated what we have on the sheet for enrollment. So those additional forty students, I anticipated increases in special education and I anticipated another two percent in funding, um, from the state. And we don't know if we're going to get that, but that was the assumption. So it's the same assumptions that we have for the current year. It's the enrollment that is in on the list, special ed and.
And the expenses too, the, the average expense, right?
And that four-year average wage and benefit increases, yes.
Now, you also had in here, just for the next fiscal year, I believe, a six point eight percent inflation rate. Was that also included in the numbers?
I did not put that into the expenditure budget, only those things that are in the expenditure budget that are listed on the expense slide.
Okay.
The, the transportation and the, um, insurance.
Right.
Property liability and, if I can remember off the top of my head.
No, I saw the list, you had the insurance, you also had, yeah, the transportation was in there, that was the big one.
Utilities, right.
I think you just had.
We do, the reason I put the in- inflation in there because it's going to put pressure on our buildings and our operations. We're not going to allocate any more funding to them, but those costs have increased. And so I'm recognizing the pressure it is putting on our departments and our principals to be able to continue to educate our students with no additional dollars, but those costs are increasing. So they'll be, have to do more with less.
Right.
And that's the recognition in here without additional dollars.
So I just wanna clarify that as we put in, and we've always kind of projected like a two percent, except for during the pan- the height of the pandemic, we didn't think there was anything gonna come through, but we ended up with a general two percent. With inflation actually sitting at, according to this, seven percent actually, that increases everything from cost of pencils on desks.
Absolutely, and that's what I'm trying to recognize is that we're not allocation, allocating additional supply budgets.
Right, so two percent every single year after that, we continue, even if everything remained the same, we would go backwards.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm gonna come back around to this side, but first I'll just make a comment as board members and anyone in the community, when we talk about fully funding that cross subsidy, um, if you watch your emails from AMSD, from MSBA right now, there are links where you can easily go in and you can, um, advocate at the state level. Our community can as well. Spread the word, keep, they, they are asking us to speak up in the state of Minnesota for that so that we can follow through.
Just Michael, for the record, are we still sitting at a seven billion dollar surplus with the state right now?
Nine point two five.
Keeps getting bad.
No, because they were still basing it on a seven billion, I thought, no.
Yep, no.
So even if they gave us one billion, that would give every school district three million to go towards that cross up.
Email your, and call your representatives, yes.
But then it's about sustainability.
And the community can as well.
I, I get that, but I'll take whatever we can get.
Agreed.
Enrique and Jonathan, I wanna come back around. I know Jonathan, you had some more questions and Enrique, I don't, didn't mean to put you on the spot right away up front. So I wanna make sure you both get a spot here to ask some questions for our discussion.
Sure. Uh, so one thing I wanted to, I guess, add a little extra color commentary on with respect to special education. Now, if you build it on the assumption that special education students or all those with an IEP are in the mainstream general education class, then reducing a class size and adding additional teachers might make sense as they have additional specials or other, uh, other needs that come up, that, um, that effect, that net effect becomes less. Cause we have several students that are almost full-time life skills. While they spend the majority of their time with caseworkers and with para support and then with all the other specialists that might come into the, into their specific situations or their classrooms. So, um, adding teachers and removing paras might have a reverse effect of what you're, what you're after at a substantial amount of money.
But it, just adding teachers does not replace a para in any of those classrooms. Those paras are special skills and they're highly valued and they're not paid nearly enough.
Agreed. So that was my additional color commentary on that piece of it. I know Deb's not here, she would've done it much more eloquently than I would've. So just kind of looking at, kind of slide after slide, we talk about aging infrastructure. We talk about how we need to add more technology, we need to do some additional things and yet still focus on our learners and making sure that they reach their fullest potential as contributing members of our society. And then looking at Laker Online and saying, we're gonna continue with the program. Again, there's more of an ask for support there. So, I, I, that feels to me like it's counterintuitive to reverse track with the TOSSAs and the technology integrationists to pull them out of those specific roles where they're providing support, um, to manage some of those other aspects that also need to be fulfilled. So I'm just having a hard time reconciling that internally.
I'll just, I'll, I'll speak to it because, well, I will because we have talked for hours about, about Laker Online because it's a risk. You know, there's, there's a cost to running a Laker Online and there's a cost should more of those students choose to leave our school district and go to an area school di- district who offers it online. So that's exactly what we've been struggling with. You know, I think, Dan, you said there's seventy-two resident students, um, who even before COVID, some of them, but currently seventy-two resident students who are attending an online school other than our own. And I don't, I don't know that we have records for how long, some of them have been doing that. Am I right with that number?
That is, seventy-two is the correct number, uh, six through twelve of current resident students who attend, uh, online and that's, uh, uh, spread across about ten different online programs across the Twin Cities metro area or broader than that. So, yes, and they, will they return to us? No, we're not necessarily, would, could they possibly? And I think one of the factors that this transition to our learning models has taught is that it's really hard to get back students or families who have left us for whatever learning model they're in, which is part of our enrollment challenges. So I think that is, uh, to Dr. Stallow's point, one of the difficult, uh, conversations we've been having is around how not to lose more students, uh, choosing to go elsewhere when there are viable options. If you look back at that slide, the, at the top of that slide that specifically spoke to the, uh, the, the ask from an FTE perspective, the top bullets that online learning has become a viable learning option for students and families. It was previously, for some, a very small percentage of our student, of our resident students, a viable learning option. It has grown in its, uh, viability for our families and we're bringing this forward as a reflection of that.
First of all, I do think that more and more, uh, schools, uh, are offering it and have offered it. Some of them became certified long before us. I agree with, with Enrique in that it's, 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 you know, FTE, it's gonna be an added cost, but here's the problem, if we delay it and then we offer it and they've already looked, we're still the, who wants to put their kids in a school district who's just now starting it? They don't want their kids to be guinea pigs. So the sooner we start it, I think the, the better offer going to be. We're gonna become more mature with it over time and I, I think it's gonna be a necessary thing to offer. Going forward, um, we, it's just one of those things we, we have to do. I don't see how we can get around it and still, uh, maintain the student population and serve our population.
And I, I'll just add one comment here, I'm trying to just facilitate, but I agree that if we go out of the game this year, I don't know that we'll ever come back in the game in the long-term risk financially and for better, serving our students and our community both, I think is a risk we really have to think through. I, I think if we pull this year, like you said, Mary, we're that much further behind if, if we decide to go back. So appreciate that comment. Jonathan, you had other comments, I know I had kinda redirected, but.
Yeah, that's okay. I appreciate you coming back to me. You know, a budget discussion, I'm just gonna go a little high level here and a little philosophical. These are tough, right? We don't enjoy this. I'm always reminded about, when I first started serving on this board, someone of wise counsel told me we can do anything we want, we just can't do everything we want. And I'm also always reminded of, I, I think almost every year of my life, I would hear a sermon at church at some point that related to, if you wanna show me what's important to you, show me your calendar and show me your checkbook and I'll tell you where your priorities are. Right? And so, I mean, this is, we've been through a, a few cycles here. We, we had slower growth than we expected the year before COVID and we were cutting. And we worked really diligently to make sure that those cuts did not affect our classrooms. And then a year later, we did it again and we lost our assistant superintendent. We kept our TOSSAs, um, we worked really hard to have those things not affect our classrooms. We went to our community with an ask. It didn't pass. Those things all have natural consequences. We just approved, um, a contract, a well-earned contract for our teachers. That's going to increase the amount of the budget that we pay our staff. At some point, um, the piper comes calling. And so I, 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 my, my only question, I guess, that I have left is, um, I am curious. I, we know how much our teachers have responded in the past couple of days already again, hoping that they can, that, that we can reconsider the discussion of the TOSSAs. And we've heard that you guys went round and round and round about it. It was, it's not an easy decision. I am curious what other things were considered. If, if, I'm, I'm not sure if this is the right place for that discussion, um, but if you can, in general terms, what else was out there? But the last thing, bef- before you answer that, the last thing I just wanna say is I, as I was preparing for the meeting, I went back to October's meeting and looked at our audit report and I think it bears, it bears repeating. Metro average per student expenditures is sixteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and we're at fourteen, six, sixty-two, two thousand dollars less. We pride ourselves on that, I think. And at the same time, sometimes I wonder why don't we pride ourselves on prioritizing our, our education? A big part of that is the local revenue, the seven county metro areas average local revenue from, um, local sources is thirty-five hundred and seventeen dollars a year. Ours is twenty-two, seventy-three. We're getting by with less. And we also hear folks that would prefer that our cuts happen in this building, right? Instead of in the building where our students are. As a percentage of our general fund dollars, the metro area average spent on administration is eight point four percent of general fund dollars. Our general fund dollars to administration is seven point five. We spend two hundred and some odd dollars less per student on administration. I don't know, you know, it's, at some point, we could come back again and, and see what we can do on the revenue side, but I think people have to understand, we're gonna, we're gonna wring everything we can out of every dollar that we have because that's how we do it. I think it's worth understanding where we are and what we're wrestling with. It's not easy. So I appreciate everybody's work and everybody's effort to search under every rock. That's my soapbox, sorry.
I appreciate it. I, I think you, you nailed it. We can have anything we want, we can't have everything. So if we have concerns about mental health resources, we could put those back in, but now what additional things will come out as well? But now what additional things will come out as well? Same thing with the technology assistance in the classrooms. I know that it takes certain burdens off of teachers who are already very burdened to help have these things, but we've also built capacity. And so as we look at what these priorities are, they all feel so important. And we have an obligation to figure out how to make it work this year with the fact that the referendum didn't fail, that we were able to settle contracts. We also have an obligation to make sure that we are stable, not just this year, because it would be really easy to say, you know what, let's put all this back in the budget. And in four years, we're in big, big trouble, maybe sooner, right? So I have an obligation to the students and the families in this district beyond my time sitting in this chair. So we are at a spot where we have to really think through. I, I don't know if you want to give more context to the discussions that were had, but I, but I know that data was gathered offsite, brought together. And then there were, you know, it just kept going up and you had long, long meetings.
Yeah, I mean, we had, you know, you saw some of those things. I mean, we had far more requests than funding. And, you know, there was not, we, we made the decision at this point to not have reductions for the current year. And, you know, I think that we're struggling as we look at FY '23 and still having a 9% fund balance. It's hard to recommend reductions at this point, knowing what that means for the next year. We understand that. But that's an option as well. We didn't have, Jonathan, I think to answer your question, we didn't say, well, what are all the things we should reduce? We didn't have that conversation. If the board directs us to reduce money, we will. We were looking at, coming to you tonight with the EL, the 1.2 EL FTE and the 1.3 classroom FTE, so an additional 2.5. And we said, we can't do that. We can't come to you when we see the budget picture with a request for an additional FTE without offering up
Offset.
some offset or efficiency. And it's, there's nothing great about it. I mean, we all know, Dan, I think you did a great job speaking to the values, speaking to the need that we have. We also don't have a math coach, district math coach. We don't have a reading coach. I mean, there's a lot of positions in this district that we don't have that other districts have. So it is, I think, I think, Jonathan, you did a great job talking about the values and the priorities. And, and it's an impossible task when we can't do some of the things that we know our students need. Michael, you just talked about the, the SEL and the socially emotional needs of our students as well as the academic needs of our students right now. And the needs are real. I would have loved to have come to you with seven additional deans or five or whatever it would be to round out a dean in every elementary and an additional dean at the middle school. Because what that would allow, it would help our, our counselors spend more time with kids who need them. Again, we could do that, but then something else would have to be reduced.
I agree with Jonathan that, that if you want to see where your priorities are, then you look at where our checkbook has been. And we need to look forward. We need to look past in that too. And, and that I'm, I'm, I'm personally am willing to, I'm willing to take the risk on the fund balance and stuff like that in order to make sure that we're still investing in our students.
I did a little bit of work on some what ifs because I hear Amy, you hear you saying, but, but we could have this, but we could have that. And if we don't fill, let's say we don't fill a million dollars of staffing next year and we get 1% of additional revenue from the state over or above the 2% we're already getting. That's about $1.75 million. So that puts you at about a 10% fund balance for next year. So, but you're still overspending as a board. And you're going into the next year and instead of being at a 4 or 3.5, you'd be at like a 5%. So I just, you know, would it help? Sure. And will it make a difference kind of like it did this year? Yes. I think, looking back, did we make budget cuts? Yes, but it helped us this year and it's helping us next year.
Yeah, right.
And it's, you know, so you can't forget that those things are helping us maintain what we have currently.
You know, I've said this a couple of times in prior cycles, but I, I'll again say, I think we have an amazing school district. We have amazing teachers. We, we have fantastic offerings. I think the, the one piece of this that we haven't spoken about as much tonight is trying to figure out a way to reach our families and get some students back. Because enrollment helps so much with these numbers, right? And I don't know what the answer is, Dan, just made the comment that if we've kind of figured out from COVID, it's hard to get them back once they're gone. I don't know what kind of outreach and what kind of stuff can be done. I feel like we need a marketing department, right? When, when chips are down, start advertising. And I know that's not what a school does, but I'm, I'm just thinking outside the box, right? But golly, how do we, how do we get back to those families and, and get our resident folks back? And by all means, open up to anybody who wants to come in from somewhere else too.
Right. I would like to know what, what direction at this point we need to provide you? Well, we, we are, these are the recommendations that we're bringing forward this evening. So unless we hear differently, this will, this will be what we maintain. If we hear different direction, then we'll get back to work on some things. I, I did hear a couple of questions that I think even, even if you don't give us direct direction to do something different with the budget. There's a question about special education. So I think we can ask Deb to come back and just talk a little bit about how we're servicing kids now to really understand the impact of not filling some of the positions that we have. So even if that's not necessarily budget, I think it's some information that, that we can either have her do in an email to you or, or come back. And I know there was a conversation about class size. And I know that we've got some information about that and we can share that now. We can share that later as well as we're working on the staffing. But, you know, I think what's, what's tricky with average class size is that across the diff, the district, our average class sizes look really healthy. And that doesn't mean that we might not have a fifth grade of 31 kids, which nobody wants. But I think our average of, of fifth grade across the district is 27, which is our target. So, you know, reducing class size, which, you know, is always great if we can. And if we had that additional $2,000 per student, that would look different.
Carrie, I want to just add that, and I get the average class size. But when you are talking average, that means 50% of them could be higher and 50% of them could be lower. And that's where the concern lies.
Yep, absolutely.
So. But I, I'm personally okay with the recommendations. I mean, I don't feel we have a choice. We've got to keep investing in what we have. And, and as Amy also pointed out, the fluctuation in the fund balance and things like that, things could change. We do need to fight. We do need to get on board 100%. No other competing objectives for getting our state and federal government to fund special ed. That's been a thorn in our side for a long time and it's one of the reasons why a lot of school districts are under in the state.
Other voices in terms of direction for this evening?
I guess I'll just make a comment. You know, I, I'll look at this a little bit at FLIRP. Laker Online, I do agree, you know, once we are now in the game, that we need to stay in the game to make it a viable program. I think the biggest concern would be, is it the 46 students that could possibly go somewhere else? I, you know, I, we've started other programs like this, men caps, things, you know, that they have to kind of get on their, their footing before they get going. So, and I would agree that, I think this is an option for, a future option that a lot of families will be looking at. One thing I wanted to clarify, and it just, I think I heard you say it, but it's something that the students could go in and out per quarter or per semester or?
Yeah, we, we would be a term program and term for us is quarter.
Okay.
And we would work with families as we, and we reference a waiting list. For example, we would reach out to those people that we couldn't fit in this year and explore this, should this be the direction moving forward. The goal is to get to that 60 students by certain.
Those 60 students are our own students.
That's keeping them, right.
But they would be coming right out of our own high school, not coming from somewhere else.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yes.
Yeah, they're not additional.
Additional revenue.
No, I don't, I, it's, I think it's the concern of the loss of that.
And we also have the same issue at the elementary. Because we no longer have an elementary program. So we're also surveying those students to make sure that they're coming back because they're in our numbers.
Okay. And then, you know, I think the recommendations, you know, I, I, I think, you know, I think I've said this in FLIRP too. This is kind of the beginning for me of if we can't find additional resources for revenue and if we continue to grow at the slower pace, that this is just going to be an ongoing reality for us. You know, we talked that, yes, these recommendations are tough, but that's with maintaining program as is. I think what's coming forward in the future is if we don't get some additional
Revenue.
kids or funding, there's going to be drastic changes to the program. There just, there's just no way about, there's not much else to do. So I do, it pains me, to be quite honest, because I've sat here for 12 years and tried to lower class size every single year. This is maintaining, correct, Jim? But trying not to do it with losing other parts of the program. So, you know, I definitely support what's going forward. That's it for me.
Other comments or direction? Can I just ask for, for our sake and for those listening? It is fluid what happens in the future fund-wise and income. So we may approve a budget and find our income changes. And is it true then that recommendations could come forward if we need to, to add something back in or change something around? I'm, I'm trying to ask this very carefully, but to also know that we can't use hope as a way to approve the budget. But we know that things are also fluid. Is there an easy way to answer that?
In the past, we have always added, if we had additional students, we've, and we needed additional teaching staff, we have added them. And then the board has approved them and then that's been included in a revised budget in December. So that's how we've always done that in the past. I would caution you because the district is already overspending.
Correct.
That any additional revenue that you get needs to be used to offset those losses.
Deficits. Okay, thank you for that.
Michael, can I?
Yes, please.
Forgot one thing. Just as a takeaway, Julie, could you just entertain me with the percentage as to where we would need to borrow money in the future? Just come back at that and what costs would be associated with that?
That's a good question.
Of having to borrow on a regular basis.
Because when I look at what's going on in other districts, their fund balances, they keep them a little bit lower than we do. And so that would help us understand maybe why.
Yeah, I mean.
Why we are where we are.
I mean, that's the fun about, the fun pol, the, I can't speak. The fund balance policy that we put forward, I don't know. It's been a while. Six, seven, eight years ago.
It's longer than that.
Is it longer than that?
It's about eight years ago.
Eight years ago, okay. Was done with the knowledge of how much expenses we have. And the point of being is you don't really want to drop down below that level of where you would have to borrow money.
That as well as making sure that we have positive Moody ratings.
Correct.
Because when we borrow money, it's important that we have a very positive and don't lose that Moody's rating so that the interest rates are higher to our taxpayers. So it's more than just the borrowing of money if we get down below a certain rate. It's making sure that this district is well-regarded in terms of its financial abilities.
And it's never really been an issue.
It has not been.
Since I've been on the board, but it's now becoming an issue. So I think we have to look at what it's on the lower end, what it's going to impact and, and what those result.
You know, the first year will probably be, like next year, you should probably be fine. It would be the second year if nothing changes in terms of revenue or expenditures. And you do spend below that and you're down in that four and a half percent, it's going to be certain months that you'll need to borrow. Once you get any lower than that, it'd probably be a whole year of borrowing. So this is, I'd have to look at the cash flow. But I know we have, like November and April are really typically the months that we struggle with cash as far as when we get to that point of fund balance.
Okay. So yeah, just a little, just so we can have an idea of what that is. Okay.
Okay. Direction for over here as well, to proceed as is going forward? We'll obviously have further discussion, but. Oh, everybody over here too? Proceed as going? Okay. Very good. I want to thank everybody for the extra time that you spent on this and also the, my fellow board directors. You put a lot of deep, careful thought into this as well. And so I appreciate the dialogue at the table tonight. Thank you. All right, let's get back to our agenda. Strategic direction number two, continual fiscal accountability through operational excellence and the alignment of human, financial and physical resources to district goals. This will be Jim, Emily and just Jim and Emily, is that right? Thank you.
Well, good evening. Changing gears here. We're here tonight to talk about strategic direction 2B, which is a lot of HR work. Emily Herman, Assistant Director for a couple more days. And then that'll change. So we'll get going, not to use up too much time here. First of all, our purpose is to continue fiscal accountability through operational excellence and the alignment of human, financial and physical resources to the district. I'm not going to read the outcome, but the first three words is a comprehensive plan. I always tell people when we started talking about this, we had intentions of sort of revamping a lot of things we did. And then COVID hit. And so we had this out there already and you can't take it back. So it was there. It's a, it's a real mouthful to work on. It's pretty much our HR work, right? It's all of our, all of the things that we do within HR. So it, it's been a lot. And of course, it's, all of our work is aligned to our, the strategic directions underneath our mission. These are the folks that have helped so far with the work that we've done. On the left is the HR team, which is doing most of the heavy lifting and has been. And then on the right, we've added some stakeholders in this process, including administrators, teachers of color and other assistant directors in different departments who've been really instrumental in helping us pilot some of these things and work out some of the kinks as we try to then make system-wide changes.
So as Jim mentioned, the, the overall outcomes was pretty overall encompassing. So we broke it down into seven different goals for this calendar year. First, starting with an appraisal process and a comprehensive system for our evaluation system. We have a really great evaluation system for our certified staff. So bringing that onto our non-certified staff and piloting that year with our custodian and maintenance group. Then looking at a revising of all of our job descriptions and certification process. One thing that we joke around about is some of our job descriptions, they still stay typewriter in them and those need to be updated. So working on that. Developing and building a systemic strategy for retaining and recruiting staff of color. Expanding our onboarding process to be continuous, not just when they're hired, but throughout the entire year. And moving beyond. And then also exploring educational license pathways and grow your own opportunities. Establishing a system of benefits education and then an exit interview process.
So that was the work that we set out to do before COVID. And then COVID hit. One of the things that might not be unique to us, but it was a lot of work, is that all of our HR work happens and continued to happen during that whole process. And then you had all the COVID HR work layered on top of that. And so this gives you an idea of some of the work that was involved with that as well. Supporting over 220 COVID-19 confirmed cases. Continue efforts to try to get resources out. You know, Emily sends out her Emily Friday email that you all get. That started at the beginning of that COVID piece. Something that was sort of in the works that we talked about a HR newsletter and wanted to be good. And we talked about it for weeks and months and all of a sudden COVID hit. And necessity is the. and necessity is the, uh, push, right? And so that started, so, um, all of those things happened as well as coming up with, uh, metrics for the dashboard related to incident command in order to make some, um, uh, some decisions that were based on data, so.
As multiple of our goals, this kind of speaks to the overall life cycle process when you think about an employee, starting with us all the way to a, an employee resigning or retiring from the district. And that really speaks to this next slide here. So developing some key characteristics and looks for is in our hiring process so we can have some consistency throughout the district. Expanding those onboarding efforts with the new hiring checklist, so again, all of our new hires are seeing the same checklist throughout the district. And then different departments or buildings can add to that as they need, but the base there is the same for all of our employees. And we reviewed and piloted that new, um, employee appraisal process with a custodial group that I spoke to earlier. We've finished that entire pilot to even to the point of getting feedback from the lead custodians and maintenance group. And it's been very well received, and we look forward to moving that pilot forward with, um, another department here soon. Um, we also piloted, created and piloted state interviews with our special education paraprofessionals. This is just a great opportunity for us to, we talk to them when they are new hires, we talk to them with the exit interview process. A state interview is our chance to talk to employees who are still with us, who have been with us for a while, to ask what's going well, what's not going so great, um, what are their feedback, their ideas? So we can take all of those interviews, get this, the feedback from them and, and move forward in a direction using that data. Um, and then again, we implemented the exit interview, um, to review those results quarterly, to see what our themes are and areas that we can be working on.
Just to follow up with that, we'd just like to give kudos again to, uh, Jim and Maureen and, and, and their folks. They've been doing a lot of piloting on this one, and it was, uh, pretty neat to see Maureen and Emily in with all the leads, talking about evaluations and watching, um, these guys and ladies, uh, do role-playing on, on doing evaluations. They took it very seriously, and I think it was, uh, very beneficial and value-added, uh, something that probably hadn't been done, uh, with them before. So thanks, Jim, for, uh, being the guinea pig. It was good timing for them too, because they didn't really have much going on. No, other than short staff and super cleaning and buildings, that was, that was it, so. The job description review, uh, as we said, uh, we do joke about it, but it is real. There are, we have found a couple of job descriptions that still reference, um, keyboards, right? And your job descriptions are the basis of everything you do after a hire starts, as you go from that hire to retire thing, right? And it's crucial to have the right job description because it's going to drive, um, the expectations of the job. It's going to drive the evaluation, and it's going to drive the compensation based upon what the job description is. So we are doing a complete relook of all of our job descriptions, um, with the help of a, a professional consultant that does this on a regular basis. Uh, and we're getting feedback from our employees, feedback from our supervisors. Uh, and then we will put this all together, so we'll have updated job descriptions. We'll be able to do a market analysis and rack and stack our positions based upon the level of responsibility that they have. So, um, it's a large project that's probably going to take six to nine months to finish, but we believe that it is crucial to, uh, the majority of the processes that we do in HR with our employees. Gets everybody on the same page, so.
Jim, really quick, when you're redoing those job descriptions, how are you communicating to the people that are in those current jobs of any change in description?
Uh, well, first off, directly, we're getting feedback from them, both in a, in a questionnaire and from their supervisors, right? So we'll look at those too. Uh, and then when we're, when we're done with that, um, I, my assumption would be there would be some education around there as to where they fall in. Remembering that, uh, job classification is a management tool that we use, right? It, if, if the consultant lists them all out, if we look at them, uh, we might think based upon, in our district specifically, we might flop a few around. So it's a management tool that we use in order to be able to get those classifications in place. And then that'll drive, uh, things like the job equity study that, that needs to be done every three years. So we will communicate, uh, probably with bargaining units for most of our positions, and then those that are terms and conditions, uh, we would be able to talk to them as well. But we haven't gotten to that point, probably this summer, we'll see where we're at in the process and figure out what that's going to be like when we have the finished product, so.
Okay, I'm just curious because obviously this is circuitous effect, right?
Yep.
You change, somebody's been in the job for a while, the job description physically changes. There's a trickle-up and down effect from that and potentially what's in a contract, uh, evaluation, you name it.
Yep.
And, and notification and getting feedback from those people.
Yeah, that will, that will change, um, change a lot of stuff. The custodians are ahead because they've done updated job descriptions already, so we're assuming theirs are not going to have much change in their evaluation processes there. So we have, again, the guinea pigs there that have helped us through that, but we'll have to do that with all, all employee groups, so. I got this one. Staffing challenges, we've talked about this, you've heard it from us all the time. Uh, those staffing challenges were real, they continue. Um, you know, the, the one piece of data that I keep hearing, uh, from, uh, the state is there are twice as many open, twice as many jobs open as there is able-bodied people to fill them. Not, not good odds. So, uh, we will continue to have those staffing challenges. Um, we've done a lot of things to, um, try to alleviate it. You were, um, willing to approve an increase for our sub-rate for our teachers. Uh, we, we believe that had somewhat of an effect. It's just the level of absences because of COVID and other reasons, um, it's just a huge amount. The number of subs remained pretty consistent. Matter of fact, probably available subs went up a little bit, but the number of absences did far outpace that. As you have seen from some of the data that I, that I've shared in other, uh, board meetings. So, uh, a lot of different things that we've tried to do to do that. From volunteers to partnering with teachers on call, getting feedback on, on what subs are looking for. Why do they come here? How do we keep them? Because we thought if we could get somebody, each one of them, to pick up one more day a month, that alleviates some things. But, uh, we had to go to some, um, some areas that we normally would not do with, um, TOSs and peer coaches having to sub a lot, uh, especially on Mondays and Fridays, just to get us through, because those are our two high absence days, so. Staffing challenges are real and they will continue, I believe.
So on that note, a huge focus this, um, last year has been, um, recruiting and retention. So as you'll see in the slide, it's some screenshots of all of the efforts that we've gone to, mostly in partnership with the communications department and department leads, where we created social media campaigns. We did multiple different email blasts to families and staff, asking to recruit for our open positions. We did the job fair at the beginning of the year and included a text, um, and emails to all of our families. Dr. Stallow mentioned it in the state of the schools, invited people to come to the job fair as well. We've done ads and stories in local newspapers, along with our district newsletter that goes out. We've done yard signs, not only for the district having yard signs for our openings, but also partnering with teachers on call to put out yard signs. I don't know if you notice them, they're really obnoxious yellow, so they stick out pretty well. Trying to recruit people who are driving up to our school to be a sub, either a teacher sub or substitute paraprofessional. We've done take-home flyers, um, student nutrition partnered with us to include an ad in the menus that were going in the take-home meals with them to recruit. We've done recruit your colleague campaigns in the HR newsletter, the principal newsletter, the stall news. Um, and we found some really great success with the principals and the schools' direct campaigns, whether that's recruiting for noon supervisors or the volunteers program for the student nutrition. Um, so they've been a huge help with all of that. And we've done direct requests via email and letters to our retiree population to ask for their support and updated our recruitment page to provide additional information. So, um, we, um, potential candidates know our contracts, our benefit offerings. And, but really, at the end of the day, the best resource that we have is our current staff recruiting their future colleagues. So we keep, um, pushing that and advocating for our staff to share out the benefits of working for this district and the openings that are available.
As far as, um, recruitment, one of the things that we are making an emphasis, emphasis on besides all of our positions, um, that are open is also to, uh, recruit and retain staff of color. You know, that's been talked about a lot, about the number of, um, languages that are spoken here and the disparity between, uh, the percentage of students of color and this percentage of employees of color, right? And, and, and we, I think we're making some gains, but we got a long way to go. Research would say that that's good for kids. Um, and so we continue to look at a lot of opportunities to be able to do that. One of them that we piloted, and we are the only school district originally that did this, is partnered with Pelsby and our teachers of color, because many of them, um, have to get an additional license because they're at La Ola de Lago, and so, uh, they'll either have Spanish and they need elementary ed or they're elementary ed and vice versa. So, um, uh, we were the, we are, uh, a school district that worked with those two other entities and, uh, helped them go through the portfolio process so that they don't have to necessarily go back to college and get a whole nother license. They can do that through their portfolio, uh, piece. So, uh, Emily has, uh, been working with them on that to do what, uh, provide whatever resources, the district as well of some either release time or, uh, some sub-time to be able to work on that as a team, uh, and go through that process together. So that's one of the things that we're doing. We also have an agreement with the, uh, PLSEA to have two teachers of color on this team to work with us as we go through that, to give us perspective as well. Um, we had, we submitted for a MDE Grow Your Own grant. Uh, Dr. Edwards and Sam and Emily and I, uh, sat down and put that grant application together. Must not have been quite good enough because we didn't get it, but there's, I believe there will be more money available and we'll continue to look at those kinds of opportunities. And then there's that grow your own path, or there's, um, the educational pass, pathway within MinCaps, um, as well. Because what we're trying to do is grow your own not only in adults, like paras becoming special ed teachers or the, uh, or the portfolio or grow your own. We're trying to also get more people interested in education, because in the end, that's what's going to matter. We're going to get some adults to go there, but getting into education has to be the thing again, right? Um, and, um, it's not necessarily where we need it to be because we know that the number of kids coming out of college that want to be teachers and are looking for teaching positions has been declining. I would venture to guess at one time, um, if you had an elementary position open in this district, you might have five hundred applicants. Um, it's, it's a fraction of that now than what, than what it used to be. And in some positions, you may not get any licensed people for the job that you're posting for special ed or, um, technology education or something like that, so. Um, we continue to work on that and expand things. Uh, we also are, um, in the past, with student teaching, uh, we were very restrictive. Maybe about twenty schools that we had, um, agreements with that we would allow, um, students to come in and student teach. Now we're trying to broaden that and go out and say, hey, we're here. Are you interested, Metropolitan State or whoever, um, we're a place that you can, you can send your student teachers, right? And so we're taking a different perspective there as well. Yeah, I think that's most of them, so.
Sure.
Add quickly to that, um, one of the main things that we're doing and it's been spoken about a couple of times throughout the night is advocacy with the legislature as well. So a lot of our, um, barriers that we're seeing is around the licensure requirements, um, from the tiered system. One really great news that came out in February is the Pelsby Board voted to approve, um, like or competitive state pedagogy and content exams. So if a teacher is licensed in another state that the, that Minnesota deems to be inequitable in terms of the rigor, um, they will, they will acknowledge that licensure without that teacher needing to go through the Minnesota licensure system. So those, that advocacy is going to significantly help us in, in the long run, increase the number of candidates in our licensed pool. Because the new tiered system, what we're getting a little bit nervous about is tier one is a one-year and it has three, uh, limit. So after three years, those tier one licensures expire and they can't renew. The tier twos are two years, they have a three-year limit, so after six years, they run out. And OFPs have, out-of-field permission, sorry, have a five-year limit. So what we want to do is do whatever we can now so that in two to three years, five years down the road, we're not running out of, um, tier one limits, tier two limits, or OFPs. Switching gears a little bit, the other focus that we've, um, that we made as one of our goals this year was benefit insurance education. As, as true in all industries, the cost of insurance and especially prescription drugs has been skyrocketing over the years. So we've really tried to educate and, um, put information out there for all of our staff to know what their benefits are, how to use them wisely, and, um, also new programs that are available to them. So we've included summaries in our HR weekly updates. We've focused on our employee assistant program that's available to all of our staff and what we call their village. So any of their family members, close friends, neighbors who support them can access the EAP program as well. We've expanded our wellness programs with Omata and WellBeats. So Omata is a healthy lifestyle app to help reduce those at risk, risk of heart disease with hypertension or, um, high blood pressure, and WellBeats is an on-demand, um, fitness program. Both are available to our staff who are part of our, um, health insurance plan. Then as part of the insurance committee, we developed a subcommittee for education and created a phased approach to, um, educating all of our staff, as you can see on the slide, and we implemented that throughout the year. And the insurance committee felt we did a, a great job, and so they disbanded the education subcommittee because they felt that it was so successful, um, in the offering. So we'll continue utilizing those materials that were developed on a cyclical basis in our HR newsletter and continue the campaigns with our staff.
So that brings us to next steps. Part of it is to continue to expand and embed some of these changes that we're making. Um, I think along with that, that I'll, that I will make mention of is, um, as an old science teacher who used to make fun of qualitative, qualitative data, um, who wanted quantitative data. You don't see a lot here, uh, from us yet. Uh, I think that's one of the things that we have to, um, that'll be a next step for us to begin to look at percentages of staff that have whatever we're looking for, right? We, that's our, that's our next logical step, so I won't make fun of qualitative data anymore. Also work with the HR team, uh, to continue to formulate and, and, and make these deliverables happen and get them out there with some timelines related to that. We're also continuing to do some of the centralized hiring, uh, which is a change we've made in the last couple of years where we drive the process, not the building or, or the department, but we're driving that to be a consistent process. And, uh, we have a few things to fill, um, over the next several months that you see listed up there, um, as far as administrative positions. So, uh, we'll, we'll keep working on that as well. And then, uh, insurance open enrollment will be kicking off here... End of April, uh, for insurance, and so, uh, that'll be another, another piece that'll be, that'll be going on as well. Uh, we continue to look at staffing, we talked about staffing tonight, we'll continue to look at staffing. I shared some data with you today, um, but that's just an ongoing thing that continues to happen, especially when resources are limited, so.
Any comments or questions?
Well, um, I'll just say, um, I'm glad that you guys are finally getting around to doing. I know it has been a priority, um, it's kind of a relief to know that COVID's taking a little bit of a side seat or backseat, shall I say? And I think it's really important, um, I think some of these things I've never seen done before from our human resource department as far as just the depth of getting feedback from employees and, and, and getting, um, just a review process involved where everyone's being involved. I think, um, the more we invest in our employees, the more they feel like they're cared for. And, um, I think you guys have done a fabulous job for that through COVID, and I think this will just kind of take it to the next level. And I'm really glad we're going over the job descriptions, because I knew some of those were pretty ancient, so, but thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. That's awesome. All that work is really good and very needed. Appreciate all your time and energy. I'm sure you didn't have any extra hours spent on, no. I am wondering about exit interviews. Was that part of the pilot and you're rolling it out? Is it fully rolled out?
We, we have had exit interviews in place for well over a year. It's been going on for some time. So we offer an in-person, but we set So we offer an in-person, but we send an email that is the actual Survey Monkey exit interview to every employee that's leaving. That's part of our process. If they choose to not do the survey and/or choose not to ask for an interview, uh, we don't pursue, but we, we make that, we make that an offer. So yes, we've been doing that for some time.
Cause I, I mean, in this, in what we're facing now in education, it's just good to know why people are leaving. I mean, we can make assumptions, but it's nice to get the direct feedback. And then if you don't mind speaking to it a little bit, this is maybe catching you off guard and we can talk about it another time too. But you talked about that you're really, um, and I loved it. At the beginning, you're, you're really trying across the district, kind of almost culturally to identify what are our look fours in candidates? And are there any themes you'd like to share? Because I would think that they would also come through in the superintendent leadership profile.
I don't know if I could give you a list of characteristics, but I can tell you one of the things we didn't mention here that, uh, we have started to do this year with the help of, uh, Dr. Edwards and, uh, Dr. Stallow is starting with the teachers, looking for what are those attributes that we're looking for, uh, in a teacher here at Prior Lake Savagery Schools? And our goal for doing that is that once we identify what those six or eight for us we feel are the most important, then we build that in our whole process up to hire and whether that's a, uh, call to a reference, whether that's a survey, whether that's the interview questions or the HumanX screener. And we can find where we look at for evidence of that in that entire process up to that point. And then at some point, then you would also want that to be part of your, um, staff development, right? And to continue to, um, boost those characteristics and it could be part of your evaluation. But, uh, we, we've gotten to the point where we don't have it finalized yet, but we've had a lot of input, um, up to this point. And it's just one of those things that we haven't quite got back to, to finalize what that list would look like. And then we begin to build that in our recruiting and hiring process and look for that. The goal would be ultimately that you expand that to all employees so that you're looking for those characteristics, be they a little bit different because it's a para or custodian or a teacher administrator, um, but that you're looking, that process is, is the same, uh, for anybody we hire in hopes that we get the right people that perform the way we would like them to and stay here for a long time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, um, in terms of like the upcoming principal opening, we have a staff survey that will go out for staff to provide their feedback, very similar to the superintendent search. And then also, uh, a, a family and guardian survey that will go out to the families at that school as well. So we'll collect all that feedback and summarize it to help inform the hiring committee on the look fours, um, that the staff and families and guardians presented as well.
And then I'll just add, um, the first meeting then that I always have with an administrator when we hire is I share with them the results of that staff and that family survey so that they see, um, the themes that emerged about the type of leader they were looking for. So that's always, that's always at my onboarding meeting with those administrators.
I want to ask a question that was based on, uh, what Amy just asked, and that was the exit interview. Do we, do we, have you compiled over time any of the feedback on that?
Well, we have about a year's worth and COVID was kind of right up front.
Yes.
So what, um, I think we've tried maybe four times to do a quarterly meeting to review as a staff. I don't think we've been successful. I'll just have to admit, uh, the other things have gotten in the way where that just had to take a backseat. So we haven't gotten to that point. The goal would be here, that some point we're, we're going to be able to have the time to sit down and figure out that process of how we tease that information out and look for certain trends. Uh, we just haven't done it yet.
How, how were the questions on the survey issued through Survey Monkey actually developed? Was that, um, from a generic list or was that specific to us? How did that work?
I think between what I had done in a previous district and what, uh, Emily had done in a previous districts, we came up with what we thought were some, um, value-added questions that would pull out some of the things as far as if they felt supported by their supervisor, did they feel they had the right training to benefits to pay, to all of those things that try to get at, um, any positives or negatives that we could that would help us, um, uh, learn more and be able to change what we do. So, yep.
Any comments or questions?
I just want to, especially coming off the, the budget question that we, or the budget discussion we just had, um, this is a team of five individuals. Um, we have 1,300 employees. And when I think about, as you were listing, the work that you've done in the last year on top of the added work of COVID, um, the value that this team has on systems thinking and process documentation, um, has set us on a, a level of excellence that's, that's remarkable. The communication that they provide weekly to employees, um, I think helps people with, instead of asking and wondering things, here's where the information is and hopefully our employees know now, this is where I look. I know this is coming every week, so here's where we're going to be updated instead of there being emails all over the place, so.
And I'll tell you, I've received personal feedback from people about how much they appreciate it, so, that it really truly is very helpful, so, yeah.
Thank you. I want to think, echo the thanks to your entire team. It is a small team. It has been a tireless monumental job with COVID added on top of it. And as Emily knows, I read her newsletters every week because I often reply to them. Thank you both for your time tonight and your work. I appreciate it.
We're going to move on now. We shouldn't have too much longer here, but board governance and policy. We are looking at board policy review. As you know, we bring policies back several times at both board meetings and study sessions before approving them. We have a few new ones to be introduced tonight. The first one is policy 401.7, exposure to hazardous substances. I know that's brought forward, um, by Kate Kyle, our, our health services person. She is not here this evening, but if you, if you look at it, it's a pretty basic edit. Did any staff or admin want to speak to it? Jim?
Jim, would you mind coming up to the microphone? Just want to be sure everyone hears your, your words. Thanks, Jim.
I did review that policy with Kate, you know, no, no changes.
Okay. Great. Comments or questions on that one from the board? Okay, thank you. Moving on, we'll go to policy 409, which is, um, employee publications, instructional materials, inventions and creations. That is coming forward, um, from both Jim Coram and Dr. Edwards. And I'm just looking to see, I'm trying to remember if there were changes in that policy. It does not look like it. Did either one of you want to speak to anything in there? Okay?
There's no significant changes.
Comments or questions?
I just had one question and that was, I'm assuming that the statement, the general statement of policy is that anything that's developed here is considered work product by a employee and that's pretty much sums it up? Okay.
Okay, great, thank you. Policy 620, credit for learning, and that would be Dr. Edwards as well.
Yes, there, uh, the credit by assessment is a addition, uh, and a highlight there. One other edit that was missed, I saw in, in reviewing this before the meeting tonight is, uh, at the bottom of the policy, uh, in the appeals process, it names a position that no longer exists. So we, the next time this comes to you, that will be updated.
Okay, thank you.
It will be, uh, my position that will be listed there.
Okay, very good.
I would work with the, with the schools directly on that.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other comments or questions? All right. That is the end there. We don't have any, uh, official first reading of policies tonight, the second reading of policies. We will be bringing forward for a vote at our April 11th meeting. We've talked about them a few times. Any lingering questions or comments on them? Mary?
On the, uh, expense reimbursement, I did ask, uh, during the first reading if we could just put in there or qualify because we hardcoded, uh, some expenses in here that we do follow the IRS and standards for the reimbursement because I believe that's what we were using anyways, uh, for mileage, meals, et cetera, instead of just hard coding the amounts in there. Not sure if that was even looked at.
This is a practice that we have done before, um, having it as tied to the government rate?
We talked about it the last time we reviewed it. And we talked about it the time before that because it was done every two years. Um, and we've talked about it being equal to the government rate, but the problem is, is that when you hard code that, if the government changes it, then we've got to go back and do an emergency change to this and just, it'd just be easier to say whichever one is greater.
Julie, would there be a problem with that at all? To do it in that way?
Okay. So board direction?
I would just ask to confirm, Julie, is that the number we use? Do we use the same?
Government rate for?
The same number as the IRS mileage number?
So would that go, um... So Julie, would you, would that edit go to you then to bring back for the final vote? Um, if we change the policy to have that wording in there, that we'll be using the government rate?
Where are we specifically looking to add is where I would like to...
Yeah.
You're shaking your head, no, is there?
We currently use the mileage rate, the governmental mileage rate. That is what we currently use and it changes just depending on whatever it is on January 1 of that year.
And you don't have to change it on the policy?
Right.
Because it's, okay.
Doesn't.
So then to me, the policy works correctly.
The policy works as is then, okay.
We also hardcoded a couple, the meal expenditure and a few other things in there, which is the $50 or $53 a day is also the standard. If that changes, do we need to change this hardcoded?
That's a number that the district utilizes. It's not a governmental number.
That needs to coincide with it right now. Okay, so we're not, we're just going to use that regardless of...
That's what we've been doing, yes.
So if I'm hearing correctly, we're good with the policy as stands? Moving forward for a vote? Okay? Thank you for that. And seeing that there are no other further questions, it looks like, on the policies that will come forward April 11th, I am going to turn it over to Dr. Stallow for superintendent relations.
I don't have anything this evening and I don't have any other informational items unless anyone else does.
Any additional informational items to add? Order staff. Okay, very good. Then I, we will move on to our final agenda item, which is public forum. We have two speakers who filled out forms to speak this evening. And I will just, as we always do, read, um, from our public forum policies. We always say that, as you know, uh, public forum is not required by state statute. However, the school board always values stakeholder input whenever we can get it. Input from students, staff, parents and community members in major decisions can be a valuable form of assistance to the board. Open forum is an opportunity to address the board. Individuals who wish to address the board during a study session may do so for a topic on the agenda, and that is so you hear how the discussion goes first before you respond to it in case it answers your questions. At least 10 minutes prior to each meeting, a sign-up sheet will be available at the meeting site for individuals to sign up to address those board, uh, to address the board. Only those whose names and addresses appear on the, I'm sorry, names in relationship to the district appear on the sign-up sheet at the time of the meeting shall be called, um, forward to address the board. Up to five speakers shall be provided a maximum of three minutes to address the board unless an exception is granted. Speakers will not be allowed to verbally attack, disparage or potentially defame individual board members, employees or students, nor may speakers use vulgar or profane language. Also, speakers may be precluded from disclosing personally identifiable private data regarding employees or students. Speakers unwilling to conform to the rules or time constraints may be told that their privilege of speaking has ended. Board members shall listen respectfully to issues brought to them by the community, but not engage the individuals during their time. The board shall not deliberate or take action during the open forum regarding an issue presented. If a follow-up by administration is necessary, the chair shall request that the superintendent will follow up on the matter. When the board chair proceeds with the meeting, audience comments are no longer in order. So we have two speakers tonight. I see, um, Bill Markert has stood up first, so we will bring him forward. He is going to speak on the timeline for the superintendent search this evening.
Good evening, I'm Bill Markert, 7600 Crestwood Drive. My comments are directed... I far the most important job... I in many of the community believe...
Says, do you want me to start over?
No, I'm sorry.
I in many of the community believe rushing this process is rickly, risky and reckless. I was told, uh, by the board chair right before this meeting that I can't give you any of the reasons why I believe rushing this is risky and reckless, so I won't do that, but I'll send you my, I'll send you my comments and an email tomorrow morning. I heard no corners were going to be cut in this search, yet that doesn't seem to be true. One example is the BWP proposal on page eight, if you take a look at that. It allows the board to request BWP to organize a representative community stakeholder group that would interview the final candidates. This part of the search process was not included in the BWP letter of understanding, nor was it included in the timeline that was shared with the public. Residents of the district want to know from the final candidates what their ideological backgrounds are pertaining to many issues we face, as well as the strategies and experience the final candidates have at addressing all the problems that we have that I can't talk about right now. It also sounds like BWP is only taking resumes from people that are, are searching for a job. When you have a search, you, you want to try and reach out to people that have jobs that aren't looking because they're the ones that typically are more successful than the ones that are looking for jobs. Not in every case, but in many times. That process takes a lot longer than just taking orders or taking resumes from people that are looking. And we're not doing, it doesn't seem like we're doing that. So I'll wrap up my comments by saying, please slow down, hire an interim superintendent and spend the necessary time and money finding the right superintendent rather than settling on someone during a rushed six-week search process. Did we spend only six weeks to plan the 2017 bond and operating referendum? Did we spend only six weeks planning last year's tech levy referendum? The answers to those questions are no. We spent longer than that. This is an investment in our children's future. Please take your time. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have one more speaker. I will just clarify, not in direct response, but for those listening, that again, to speak to something on the agenda tonight was presented, was the timeline and the process, not the qualities, um, that we are looking for in the superintendent. We are still gathering that information publicly through focus groups and through surveys. So I just want to clarify how that worked with the agenda this evening. Then I have Amy Bullion, um, speaking on policy 521 tonight. Amy, did I say your last name correctly?
Bullion, yeah.
Bullion? Okay, thank you. I apologize, I was going to catch you beforehand, but I don't think you were here quite yet, so.
No, I wasn't here on, on time. And so I was signed up by, um, someone else. And that policy that you're speaking of, I'm not even sure what that policy is. What I'm speaking on is mental, the mental health issue that is on the agenda. Is that okay for me to go forward with what I wanted to say?
Could you tell me specifically what mental health agenda you're speaking to item?
I believe it was on page nine.
On the agenda? Can you tell me the agenda item, please?
I'm not looking at the agenda, but I believe it's on page nine, um, talking about the budget of, of mental health in our, in our school. Natalie, do you know what it said exactly?
Are you speaking about the budget report?
No, I'm speaking about mental health in our, in our school.
Talked about SCL.
Under base assumptions?
Spend $40,000?
Okay, that's not page nine, page 11.
I just want to make sure that we're being accurate here, thank you.
Okay.
I go grab the, the agenda that's out there. Page 11 has SR2 funding for guidance counselors, $740,000.
Is that what you're speaking to?
I'm not speaking about, um, a financial concern. I'm speaking about a mental health concern. I'm not speaking about a financial concern. I'm speaking about a mental health concern.
Right. And that's not on our agenda this evening. That's why I'm trying to discern. Does somebody else see that where I'm not seeing it?
Maybe can I grab the agenda from out there?
I have it right here if you'd like to take a look.
Will it look the same as the one outside on the desk? Because it was the one outside is large.
Well, that's the board packet. This is the top two sheets that are the agenda. I just want to be clear that we give you time if it is on the agenda. If anybody on the board can help me find.
I would have probably been done speaking already.
No, while we can start.
It's just a matter of policy.
Isn't it policy to hear from the community?
It is, right. And so you can't speak to.
This is page nine.
So if you were to speak about the budget funding for SEL or for that?
I'm not speaking about funding.
Okay.
Yes, you are. Yes.
Am I speaking about? Yes, I'm speaking about funding.
The time that it takes out of the workday for the budget for mental health services and all the resources that you're using for the mental health service services that they're providing.
Specifically, if I if you are looking for more specifics on what I want to address is the pep rally that happened at the high school this past Thursday and the assemblies that happened the week before. All of these things are time taken away from education. And in my student in my two students' experiences is contributing factors to increase in their mental health issues and anxiety and.
That is not on the agenda tonight. You can come back to the board meeting where it's not on the agenda and address us. I do have to stick to policy so that I can follow these policies.
Thank you.
I don't want to be disrespectful. I just have to honor what we set forward for everybody else as well.
Thank you for.
Would you also feel free to write to us with those concerns and come back on the 11th if it's not on the agenda to speak?
Yep, I'd be happy to.
I would appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'm sorry for the trouble.
Okay.
All right. At this time, then, I don't even think I need a motion. We will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.